Forbes Gibson. Get these here.
These here.
Gentlemen. Here we go. Councilman Schlacta. There we go. Fantastic. Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Gonzalez with the First Presbyterian Church to give our invocation, please. Will you all rise?
Let us pray. Our precious Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you this day for this wonderful country that we live in. Thank you for the freedoms that are afforded us, and Lord, we pray for your protection from the enemies, both domestic and abroad. Lord, we thank you for our military, for our first responders, for our law enforcement officers, and pray for your hand of protection upon them as they perform their duties. Lord, we thank you for the city of Bonita Springs. We thank you that you have protected us and kept us, and, Lord, we pray that your hand will remain upon us in a very special way. Thank you for all of the council members, the mayor, all of those that have given of themselves and are giving of themselves for the work of this community and for the betterment of this community. Lord, I pray for your wisdom and guidance as they discuss and make the decisions that will prepare the future of our city. I pray, Lord, that you will be with them and give them wisdom even in those times when there are sincere disagreements. Lord, may your hand be upon each one of them, their families, their health, and their well-being. And, Lord, continue your blessing over this city of Bonita Springs. We pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Councilman Schlacta, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
It would be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Schlaacke, here.
Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilman Schlacta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Okay, public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak on agenda items? Agenda items only, please, at this time. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Bob Hilliard. In 1962, the Bonita Springs Lions Club was chartered. Since that time, it has been an integral part of the community. Prior to Bonita Springs incorporation, the Bonita Springs Lions Club worked with Lee County to build the first ball fields out on Pine Street. Four years ago, the Bonita Springs Lions Club worked with the ladies' girls' softball team to fit a field over there and install an electronic scoreboard. The Lions Club has also, over the past fifty-something years, provided support to the Bonita Springs Literacy Council, the Assistance Office, the Grammar School, the Middle School, Astero High School, the Boy Scouts, and many organizations for the less privileged in our community. In nineteen, late 1960s, early 1970s, we started a Saturday flea market. This Saturday flea market was an integral part of our fundraising activities to give back to our community. Three years ago, we lost our lease after five years at the Promenade, where we built a very successful market. Our last year at the Promenade, the Bonita Springs Lions Club made $90,000, which all was given back to the community. We ask today that the council, there's six days, seven days in a week, six days other than Saturday, we welcome anyone to do a market in Bonita Springs. We're only asking that you permit, the Bonita Springs Lions Club, to have the Saturday market, and the Lions Club or any other charitable organization provide a market on Saturday. Several days ago, I was going through memorabilia from my career, looking for something for my granddaughter, and I ran across something that affected me many years ago. George Carlin died in June of 2008. Several years prior to that, he finished a performance with these words, and I want to share them with you. In that day, they meant a lot. Today, they mean even more. "The paradox of our time in history is that we have taller buildings but shorter tempers, wider freeways but narrower viewpoints. We spend more but have less; we buy more but enjoy less. We have bigger homes and smaller families, more convenience but less time. We have more degrees but less sense, more knowledge but less judgment, more experts yet more problems, more medicine but less wellness. We drink too much, smoke too much, spend too recklessly, laugh too little, drive too fast, get too angry, stay up too late, get too tired, read too little, watch TV too much, and pray too seldom. We have multiplied our possessions but reduced our values; we talk too much, love too seldom and hate too often. We've learned how to make a living but not a life; we've added years to life but not life to years. We've been all the way to the moon and back but have trouble crossing the street to meet a new neighbor. We conquered outer space but not inner space. We've done larger things but not better things. We've cleaned up the air but polluted the soul; we've conquered the atom but not our prejudice. We write more but learn less; we plan more but accomplish less. We've learned to rush but not to wait. We build more computers to hold more information, to produce more copies than ever, but we communicate less and less. These are the times of fast food and slow digestion, big men and small characters, deep profits and shallow relationships. These are the days of two incomes but more divorce, fancier houses but broken homes. These are the days of quick trips, disposable diapers, throwaway morality, one-night stands, overweight bodies and pills that do everything from cheer to quiet to kill. It is a time when there is much in the showroom window but nothing in the stockroom, a time when technology can bring this letter to you, and a time when you can choose either to share the insight or just hit delete. Remember, spend some time with your loved ones, because they are not going to be around forever. Remember, say a kind word to someone who looks up to you in awe, because that little person soon will grow up and leave your side. Remember to give a warm hug to the one next to you, because that's the only treasure that you can give with your heart, and it doesn't cost a cent. Remember to say "I love you" to your partner and your loved ones, but most of all, mean it. Remember to hold hands and cherish the moment, for someday, that person will not be there again. Give time to love, give time to speak, and give time to share the precious thoughts in your mind. And always remember, life is not measured by the number of breaths we take, but by the moments that take our breath away." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, ma'am. Please come right up.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Susie Turner, and I'm with a small Bonita company called Poplicious. I was also a Lions Club member. My folks are here with me. They've been here for twenty years. They've watched the Lions Club do many wonderful things for this community. I'm overwhelmed with what Bob just wrote, because that's exactly how Bonita Springs is to our family. I had no clue that he was going to read that, so excuse me for being a little shaky, but it's the truth. We're surrounded by Fort Myers, which is so touristy and busy, and we're surrounded by Naples, and yet here's this little blossom of Bonita Springs, right in the middle. I was not able to rejoin the Lions Club due to financial reasons. I moved down here in 2010 and brought my folks to their home where I was living in 2012 because of their health issues. That's what Bonita Springs is to me. It's family. It's caring. It's giving a helping hand to other people. I started Poplicious in 2011. I did it because my mom, she loves popcorn. Her mobility was bad. I bought her a little popcorn machine and put it in our living room so we could pop popcorn during movies. We always ordered popcorn from Chicago, and I thought, oh, you know what? I can do this. I bought a machine. I worked on a recipe while I was still able to work. And two years ago, in 2014, my parents started, their health started diminishing, so I had to quit my job. The Lions Club took me under their wing before I was even a member and said, hey, we can help you. Come to our market. Do your best. They tried my popcorn. They loved it. I hope. And so it started. I joined the Lions Club. I wasn't able to renew because of finances, but you know, the Lions Club never gave up on me. I've been to other markets. Nothing is as supportive as the Lions Club. I tried to get into, I don't know if I can see, the company that's on your agenda. I tried to get into their markets and couldn't. There was no support. You know, it was important to me at that time, because that's how I subsidized myself not working. I could still do it in my home. I popped popcorn in my home. I have a Bonita Springs business license. I followed all the guidelines. The only one locally that I could go to a market and feel secure far enough away from home was the Lions Club. Their market brought a lot of people. They help individuals. They help and support all these kids, and it's a shame. They've, I've been at their markets, at the dog track, and at their clubhouse. Nothing brings the money like being on, being at the Promenade or on 41, where it's so accessible. I come to you today to listen to what we have to say and to remember that Bonita Springs is the hub of family. I mean, I think we have a great place here, a great city, and I hope you don't give up on the Lions Club, the way that the Lions Club did not give up on me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Morning, Rick.
Good morning. Rick Steinmeier. I have, I'm a Lion, too. I didn't really expect to speak about the Lions Club today, but they do so much. They're such a hub of the community downtown. Every bit that comes into them goes back out to the community. I see, drove by Rhodes Fish House out in their parking lot, there was a big smoky cooker there out there that they're having. Lots of people like to go and business on other people's property. They have no property tax to pay. They have no health department to answer to. The Lions Club is responsible. It's one of the best clubs in the whole nation. It's international, has 1.3 million Lions Club members. It's the biggest service outfit in the world. So it's a tough decision for you all to make. I hope we can come up with some sort of compromise to help everybody out. Now, what I really came here to say is on 8A, is that of all the people in Bonita Springs that don't need subsidy from the city of Bonita Springs, it's the people on Little Hickory Island. They do not need any money from the city with strings attached. Last year, they, I find out at the end that the city gave them $10,000, and they're running around getting all the bids they could, trying to get up to $10,000 so they could spend every bit of that money. They don't need the money. I don't want the money, and I give it, stick it in Old 41 or give it to Lions Club or something, but don't give it to Bonita Beach Improvement Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else this morning with public comment? Hello? Good morning. How are you?
Very well, thank you. Hi, I'm Betsy Ventura. I am co-owner of Local Roots Farmers Markets. We respectfully request for council to approve our permit for a farmer's market that we have been operating the previous two seasons at the Promenade. We are within the guidelines of your ordinance and have and will continue to abide the parameters set by the city. Please take in consideration, we run an event that allows fifty small businesses to succeed. We stimulate and draw people to the Promenade shops, offer a healthy place to shop for local foods, and a gathering place for the surrounding communities each Saturday morning, October through April. We approached council last month requesting for a flea market permit, thinking the Lions Club was not pursuing their event next season. We have since learned that they will be applying, so we respectfully changed our request to a farmer's market. Four years ago, the Lions Club market lease was not renewed when they took, when RLR took over ownership. The Lions Club then moved to another location on 41. Towards the end of their first season in the new location, we were approached by the Lions Club. He asked if we would be interested in helping them with the market the following season, as they were struggling managing the market due to lack of volunteers, less foot traffic, and decreased sales. We had a lot of vendors approach us, saying they were looking for a change. We understand that the amount of money that the market once generated for the city, and we are sorry that it is not the case today. I don't think not having us, not giving us a permit because we run a successful market is the answer to bring the success back to a weekly event for the Lions Club. In other markets we operate, we have a nonprofit table that rotates each week. That table has generated hundreds of thousands of dollars back into the communities directly from funds raised at the farmer's market. In one instance, a gentleman came to our market, shopped, talked to an SDCF member who was represented at the nonprofit booth. The customer went to his car, returned with a check for $125,000 for the local charity. For years, a local K-8 school sold raffle tickets at the market at an annual event that raised the school close to $60,000 each year, with 75% of the tickets sold at our farmer's market. These are just two of many examples. We have over thirty different charities that benefit through our markets, so we know that we can do the same for Bonita if we are allowed. We also have given thousands of pounds of fresh food to local food banks through a weekly donation for seven seasons. We hope that you will support us to continue to operate and bring Bonita a green market on Saturday mornings. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Jean Bear with the Local Roots Farmers Market. Thank you for having us back, and again, we appreciate the support of the city in recommending that you all approve the farmer's market on Saturdays, and we also appreciate them suggesting that we add the two non-for-profits each week to the market that Betsy has just reviewed with you. I wanted to go through, expand a little bit on the list that she had, so not only would we be able to help the Lions Club, but we believe we could help a variety of non-for-profits here at Bonita if you would allow two booths at the market. Organizations that have benefited with us to represent the hundreds of thousands of dollars include the American Heart Association, Artistry of Southwest Florida, the Big Arts Cultural Center, the Blood Mobile, the Community Association, the Captiva Holiday Village, the Recreation Center, the Community Housing Resources, Crow, Ding Darling, Echo, Astero High School, FISH, Florida Gulf Coast University, Florida Southwestern State College, Fort Myers High School, the baseball team, the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, the Girl Scouts, the Gullisano Children's Hospital, the Green Peace Homestay, the Harry Chapin Food Bank, Human Trafficking Awareness, Kiwanis Club, League of Women Voters, Lee County Department of Health, Lee County Elections, Lee County Memorial Health Systems, the Rotary Club, the Conservation Foundation, the Lions Club of Sanibel and Captiva, the Optimist Club, the Power Squadron, the Public Library, the School Fund, the Sea School, the Talking Monkey Project, and the Zonta Club. That is thirty-nine organizations, again, that have worked with us in the farmer's market to put money back into the local community, and again, we believe that if you allow the two non-for-profits to join us at the Saturday farmer's market, that we will be able to do that to Bonita Springs as well. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Sebastian Masada. I'm just a vendor here to speak my opinion, as well as some of my clients. What I do is I do in-home, high-end, fine dining. We do multi-course wine dinners in people's homes. I have been a vendor from the Lions Club seven years ago until now with Local Roots the last couple of years. I'm not going to give my opinion, but I'm going to give my clients' opinions that I do. I just deal with the very wealthy of Bonita Springs, as well as Port Royal, Naples. Their opinion is they absolutely love the farmer's market that's going on at Promenade now. If there's a difference between a flea market and a farmer's market, the Lions Club is more of like a flea market, if you can label them as that, as the Roots is more of a food-friendly, green farmer's market. And I don't know if there's two different labels, that you can put it as a flea and a farmer's market. So if they're open, as my opinion, as a flea market, then the other one should be open as a farmer's market. It should be two different labels. I can't speak long. I do have an MRI to go to, like, I'm going to be late, so I do apologize. But I just want to speak for the people as a vendor, as well as the clients and customers that do come, so we just thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Bram. I'm the Director of Property Management for RLR Investments, and we own Promenade at Bonita Bay. We bought the Promenade in the fall of 2012. We spent over a year undergoing a major renovation to the entire plaza. We did that to focus on eliminating the reputation that it was a rundown, ghost town, poorly-run plaza. Our intention during this time was to revitalize the plaza and bring it back to an upscale plaza like it once was. We cleaned up all the units and recruited good, quality, upscale tenants. Within a fifteen-month period, we went from a 10% occupancy rate to an 80% occupancy rate. In 2013, we approached Local Roots. They were our, ran a farmer's market for us at one of our plazas very successfully on Sanibel. So this is the type of true green farmer's market that we were hoping for at Promenade at Bonita Bay, bringing an upscale shopping center back to life. We wanted a true green farmer's market. That was the demographic of the shopping center, and the tenants that we brought in were supportive of a true green farmer's market. They questioned whether we were going to continue to have a flea market. They felt that it was a different demographic, a different type of market, and which the previous gentleman just briefly spoke about. It's two different things. People who shop at, for instance, Whole Foods are looking for the organic Whole Foods. They're not necessarily going to be buying the things from, let's say, Publix. So I don't think that the farmer's market is really affecting the flea market, because you have two different types of shoppers going to the two different types of markets. So I'm here today just to request that you, once again, issue a permit for the Local Roots to operate at Promenade at Bonita Bay. We get a lot of support from the Bonita Bay residents. They're the demographic that's shopping at this true green farmer's market, and they're the ones that are going to be disappointed if the true green farmer's market is no longer at our Promenade at Bonita Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning.
My name is Rhea Burgert, and I'm with the Bonita Beach Improvement Association. BBIA, we call it, was founded in 1952, and its goal is the beautification and improved functionality of Little Hickory Island public spaces for its residents, guests, and visitors. This island represents the beach side of Bonita Springs. With the support of its members now approaching 400 in number and working with the city and county, it's done this very effectively in the past, and with your help, will continue to do so in the future. In the past eight years, we planted, purchased and planted sixty new palm trees and removed the dead ones, renovated the circle at the north end of Hickory Boulevard, redone the entrance signs at both ends of the island, had the county repave the walking path on the east side of Hickory Boulevard, and the county trimmed many of the sea grapes at the beach accesses. We've kept Hickory Boulevard free of trash, coconuts, and tree limbs regularly. We've spent most of our money each year on these projects. We appreciate the beautification work done in the downtown area of Old Bonita and are committed to similar efforts along Hickory Boulevard to make the beach component of Bonita Springs equally beautiful and safe for pedestrians and cyclists along Hickory Boulevard. This would include improved maintenance of the palms, beautification, trash pickup, sidewalks, and improved pedestrian safety crossing the street. The proposal being brought to the city council today is to seek co-funding for the addition of shrubs and perennial plants along the east side of Hickory Boulevard. To this end, the BBIC will contribute some $25,000 and is asking the city to contribute the balance. Three proposals were received, from $35,000 to $38,000, and we hope you will support this. Thank you very much for your help on this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Great.
I'm Lynda Miller with Shop Local Productions. I've been a Bonita resident for the last twelve years. Was approached recently by Rhodes Restaurant to open a farmer's market at their location to help bolster their business and bolster their activity and put them back on the map. We've since started a small farmer's market around Easter time. I'm applying today for a flea market permit, hoping to employ forty vendors and their families. We're not in competition with the Lions Club, because we do operate on Sundays. Also, we anticipate spending thousands of dollars back using local newspapers. Today, I also like to just comment quickly. We do have a barbecue vendor on site. They are the, they've won the People's Choice Award seven years in a row, and they are the example that the state of Florida uses for a mobile food truck. So they are certified and, you know, how do you say it? Qualified to be a health vendor there, a healthy vendor. So, so, once again, like to request that we have a flea market permit, just because that would open up the vendor variety that we have to not just food vendors, but also to arts, crafts, and that type of thing. And we'd like to, in our other farmer's markets, we have a total of four, and the other farmer's markets that we have, we do use local photographers. It's a venue that they can, and local artists, it's a venue that they can pay very little rent, but actually get a little more famous for getting their product out there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patrick.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, Patrick.
Pat McCourt, for the record. I'm here to speak on behalf of the two organizations, the Bonita Beach Alliance and the Bonita Beach Improvement Association. I'm here to support Councilman Schlacta's request for funds for our latest project. As you know, this organization, these organizations dated back long before we had a city, long before my time, certainly. And volunteers like Rhea and you all know Rick, have been on their hands and knees out there cleaning up trash and planting flowers and this sort of thing for years, long before we had. This is one of the key features of our city, and I think that you would want to participate in something like this. This, the problem originated a couple of years ago when the county widened the road. They widened the road for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but they took out a lot of shrubbery, they took a lot of greenery out, and low and behold, traffic has increased nicely, okay, in their opinion. Now, your own people who are doing the Bonita Beach Road Improvement Association, or the Bonita Beach Road Improvements, pointed out to us that when you want to increase traffic, you widen the road. When you want to calm traffic and reduce traffic, you narrow the road, okay? Now, they widened the road, they made it look more like a freeway, and low and behold, we picked up more traffic. Our objective in this project is to try and bring back some of that greenery, get it close as we can to the road, not that it's obstructing the road, maximum height of maybe two or three feet, but to serve- but to serve as a calming factor and also to prevent some of the construction parking along the road, because that's been a tremendous problem for us with people eating their lunch out there and dumping their trash and this kind of thing. If it wasn't for Rick, that road would look like a mess most of the time. So, we know that, we believe that you're going to want to participate. We've raised about $25,000 for the project. It's going to cost us a little more than that. And we hope that you would look favorably upon the request and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else this morning with public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. We are going to advance to proclamations and presentations, and we're going to go to Item B with the Benita Springs Charter School. Would they please come forward? Okay, we have a little public service announcement here. The post office called. And anybody, not FedEx, but the post office called. And any cars, if you did park over there, please remove your cars. Apologize for that. I know parking's tight, but we do have a request. Welcome. Hi, come on up, please. How are you, Principal Carroll? Hello, good morning.
One of the best charter schools in town.
Yes. I am a little biased. As you know, our daughter graduated the Benita Springs Charter School last year. And our son is just finished up the seventh grade and will be starting the eighth grade. Nice to see you all here this morning. This is a certificate of recognition presented to the Benita Springs Charter School for being selected to host Lieutenant, the Lieutenant Governor of Florida, Carlos Lopez Cantera, to showcase their school as a premier provider of high-quality charter education choices in Lee County. And from, like I said, a very biased and very personal point of view, when we looked for schools in town, we actually chose this town because of the school. So we're very, very proud of what you've accomplished over there. There's, I don't know, you're to the moon and back and to the chart and have a lot of personal faith in you and the system and the education over there. So, on behalf of the City of Benita Springs, Mayor Peter Simmons, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. And the kids, if you can deliver these to all of the council members. Just want to thank you so much for all of your support. Benita Springs Charter School has been in our community for 14 years. I have been there for 14 years. It has been a great privilege and honor. We are so thankful for this recognition, having the governor come to school. All of these students that are here before you helped lead the tours today when we had the governor with us. And we also brought some copies of our local newspaper. We've also partnered with the Naples Daily News and the Benita Banner. They helped our student leadership team with the newspaper. So we were also showcased in our first inaugural issue of the newspaper with the Lieutenant Governor. So we brought that to share. But we are very supportive. We thank you very much and are very appreciative of all the support we get from the City of Benita Springs. Thank you very much for your time and this recognition.
And thank you very, very much. And quickly, if you could just tell us who you are.
Kimberly Ben, Assistant Principal.
Ally Demmett, student.
Darius Bevoire, fifth grade student.
Luke Hippokoski, seventh grade, going to eighth grade.
Do you know my son, Petey Simmons? You know Petey? I'm going into first grade, I think.
Shmala Lima, eighth grader, going to ninth grade.
I'm Faith Lemus, going into seventh grade.
Melanie Villaneda, going to seventh grade.
Once again, thank you very, very much, and just continue to keep up the fantastic work. Thank you. Okay, Christine Ross, please come forward. Good morning, Christine. How are you? Well. I think most of you probably know, recently Christine received a wonderful job opportunity with the Chamber of Commerce of Maryland, the State Chamber of Maryland. And will be kind of a homecoming of sorts as she has family in the area. So we certainly are sorry to see her go, but it sounds like a phenomenal opportunity. So, this is a certificate of appreciation to you, Christine A. Ross, in appreciation and recognition of your leadership and dedication to the City of Benita Springs. Your service to our businesses and community brought success and notoriety to our area. You will be missed. Signed, Peter Simmons, Mayor of Benita Springs, June 15, 2016. Christine, thank you very, very much.
Please, thank you. It's been such an honor to work with all of you and with Carl and Arlene. And there are going to be a lot of tears between now and July 1st when I finish. But the city's been through an amazing transformation, and I wish you well. And my predecessor will probably be announced tomorrow. So there will be no break in the action, and I wish you well in the future, and I thank you for this.
Congratulations, Christine. We know you'll do very, very well. And go Terps, right? Maryland Terrapins? Congratulations, Christine. We're actually going to call a quick audible here for Councilman Greg DeWitt.
Thank you, Mayor. As a point of personal privilege, I asked the mayor if I could do this. Last week, I attended a conference at FASD, which is the Florida Association of Special Districts. And Councilman Forbes was there also, but he had to leave abruptly. So I accepted this award on his behalf. And basically what it says is Fred Forbes has successfully completed the requirements to be recognized under the Florida Association of Special Districts as a certified district official on this day, June 9, 2016.
He's certified, all right.
So I'd just like to present that to Councilman Forbes for that on behalf of the FASD and say that he did it in a timely manner. It was one of the quickest times that they've seen somebody get certified as a district official. So, Councilman?
Please. Fred, you want to say a few words? Talking to the microphone, Fred.
I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman Greg DeWitt. I don't know that this is a record because I wasted one year of the continuing ads, the first year, because somebody didn't register me upright. So if I'd got that one done, I really would have set a record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Forbes, and thank you, Councilman DeWitt, for that. Okay, we're going to move on now to D. We're going to have a presentation. And Jeff, will you please come forward, please, with AXI?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Today, I'm going to put on a quick presentation regarding clean fuel and sustainability. First off, I want to thank you guys, thank City Council, Mayor Simmons, for letting us do this. The reason we wanted to give this presentation-
Jeff's a fellow New Englander, by the way. I got to point that out.
Hopefully, that doesn't hurt me.
He's up in Maine, a little north of New Hampshire.
Yeah, same neighborhood. So we saw some synergies between what we do as a business and basically the sustainability initiative you guys are putting on for Benita Springs. So I attended the summit here a while back, the Sustainability Summit. And I wanted to basically approach you guys and show you some stuff. Worst case is you get a little bit of knowledge out of this. It's an educational piece. If there's some synergy between us, then I think we can work something out. So, this is a presentation on clean fuel and sustainability. We prepared this for Benita Springs City Council. So a little bit about AXI. Basically, we're an A-plus rated business with the Better Business Bureau. We design, we engineer, we manufacture, along with the service side, custom fuel systems, solutions to keep fuel pristine and in optimal condition within a storage tank. These are big problems for hospitals, data centers, anywhere that fuel is going to sit for a longer period of time. So, we have a number of different products. We also have a service side. We deal with gasoline and diesel. So if there's any issues, we can take care of them. So, a little bit about the contaminants you're going to find. What happens is condensation from the air will get into your tank. Condensation's going to build up on the sidewall of your tank. And water is more dense than diesel fuel or gasoline, so it'll build up on the bottom of your tank. In between the diesel and the water layer, you're going to get a layer of microbial growth. It doesn't take much to infect the fuel. This microbial growth will break down your fuel, and it's going to leave a sludge and acidic layer. Now, that layer is going to clog filters and shut down your engine if you try to run with it. This is a big issue we see with a lot of backup storage, hospitals, data centers. If the power goes out and they haven't been recirculating their fuel, they don't use enough to keep a new, fresh supply of fuel in there. And you'll see the generator will drop out immediately after they switch off the grid. So, we've seen a number of different problems with this. This is a big concern, especially here as hurricane season approaches. It's pretty concerning. So you get a sludge, you get some asphaltine, some waxes in the fuel, also dirt and particulate from the transportation and the process of getting the fuel to your tank. So the effects contamination, anywhere you see black smoke coming out of a truck, that's a good indication you're getting full combustion of that fuel. That's unburnt fuel coming out your exhaust tailpipe, an indication that you're less efficient than you normally would be. Also a sign that you're probably wearing away your engine at that point. Engines are designed to function as well as they ever will when they leave the factory. As they age and you run dirty fuel, that engine is going to get less efficient. You're going to see more smoke until you get a catastrophic full functional failure. We consider this basically non-functioning of an engine. If your fuel degrades, your engine and all the mechanical components within it, at some point, that engine can't pull enough energy out of the fuel to complete the combustion cycle and will shut down. So, at this point, it's a little too late to try to do anything. We like to prevent that kind of a problem. So this is a preventative maintenance to ensure optimal reliability. So the cost behind dirty fuel, there are some explicit costs that you can see. The fuel itself, the return on how much you spend for that fuel and how optimal your engines are or how efficient they run. There's also implicit costs. So you don't see, or you don't typically associate costs with part failure. Unplanned maintenance, if a truck has to go down or if something in the city has to break, you need to bring out staff. Someone has to replace that vehicle. There's a lot of implicit costs that you normally wouldn't see. So, it's important to understand everything when you're looking at a return on investment on something like this. And it ties really well into sustainability. If you're not burning that fuel and it's going out your exhaust, not only are you putting exhaust into the air, you're using up that engine faster than it normally would with clean fuel. So, there's a few ways we try to achieve optimal fuel quality. Filtration is one. You want to remove particulate, anything that's bad in the fuel. You want to separate water, because that's going to lead to microbial growth. You're going to condition the fuel to break it down. And additives is a big one, too. So, we've seen a 2%, 10% increase in fuel economy just from adding an additive alone, combustion catalysts. These can be added to the tank at a very low ratio, very small cost per gallon. But what that'll do is ensure that your engine's going to stay clean, so you don't have to do the repair work on the back end. It's a preventative maintenance. So for us, we manufacture maintenance systems and remediation systems. So if you're going to put a maintenance system on a tank, that system is going to keep that fuel clean and ensure that when you go down, when you're out of power, that fuel is going to be clean, whether it's for a fleet or a backup fuel system. You know that fuel in that tank is pristine at all times. Then there's a remediation aspect. If you've left your tank for five months out in the sun, in the humid air down here in Florida, and you take a sample from that tank, you could have four to five inches of water on the bottom. Putting that through your engine obviously is bad, but the side effects of that water is also very bad. So tying a little bit into Benita Springs and your sustainability initiative you've put on, green government. So, we've done a number of things with vehicles or fleets of trucks, basically keeping their fuel clean. And then they watch and they do the ROI on the number of repairs and part replacement they would normally do. And then they've seen great increases in what cost reduction would be over that time. So we have technical fuel maintenance experts onsite. So we're right up the road in Fort Myers, if you didn't know. But we work with green building programs to get everything certified because it's a sustainability as well as a return on investment. So for energy optimization, the use of an additive, like I said, it enhances the combustion. So if you're combusting correctly, that fuel that's non-combusting isn't going to stick to the sidewalls of your engine. It's not going to get into your oil pan. It's not going to make your exhaust black. I followed a truck a week ago where there was black exhaust, basically too much to see. So, what can we do for the transportation sector? Basically, you can clean that fuel, you can add an additive, you can ensure that you're reducing maintenance on that system. You're also reducing parts costs, staff onsite. We can also extend the life of DEF or DPF systems, diesel particulate filters, so they don't have to do long regen cycles. This is something that we've seen. If the bus driver has to pull over or a city fleet has to pull over every three or four hours and run the regen cycle on the system, you're going to get more actual time on the road from this. Also, environment. If you're combusting the fuel, you've got better air quality. Bus fleets, we see a lot of child bus fleets, if they're blowing black smoke out the back and the children get on the bus right next to it. That's not a clean thing. It doesn't look good for a basically a school system. So really, it's the ultimate protection. You wouldn't feed your body bad fuel, or you wouldn't feed your body bad food. So why would you feed your engine bad fuel? Engines in the past could deal with a lot of this dirty fuel, but as technology for the engines progresses, the fuel really hasn't kept up. So our goal is to ensure that the fuel keeps up with the technology and the progressions we see with engine design. So you want to keep your fuel contamination free. Your system will have a longer lifespan, less component changes, less issues with your overall fuel system. And it's good for your business, too, especially with the hurricanes coming up. If we have a big hurricane and you go down on backup power and that fuel hasn't been treated, or if that fuel is in the tank and it's degraded, you could lose your backup system almost immediately. We see a lot in these big data centers, they have backups for backups. And then they also make sure that the fuel in each of those tanks is clean. They want to ensure that if they do go down, they can still operate. If you can't run a credit card at a data center, you've lost a decent amount of money at that point. So, basically, it's about the future of your business and understanding that preventative maintenance can be cheaper in the long run, even if it's hard to put an ROI towards that. So, it's a peace of mind in the worst case. So I had to keep it quick, but if there's any questions, you guys can contact AXI International. We're basically right up the road. We customize and specialize this kind of stuff for you. If anything, you've got a little bit of education on the problem that we see, and you can contact us for answers if you'd like. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeff. And I guess I do have a question. I think maybe you and I had discussed this when we met. You know, we had that phenomena, unfortunate, in 2007 when we were living up in Michigan and we bought a Jeep Commander that had the flex fuel. We're all excited. We're going to burn E85. We're going to, you know, very, very excited. We're green. This is wonderful, right? Well, then, of course, winter came and the moisture in the system of the Jeep caused a problem. Obviously, we don't have that same phenomenon down here, or do we? Because one of the slides you showed with the condensation in the tanks, can you just kind of walk through that a little bit?
Sure. So we actually have a bigger issue down here with the condensation portion. Warm air enters your tank as you draw fuel out of the tank. And what happens is at night, the temperature goes down, and that water will condensate on the inside of your tank. It's going to drop down to the bottom. And you get some people that are surprised because they don't know how water got into the tank. They think all the seals are tight, and they think everything on the tank is well-maintained. It's that air coming in that's humid that gets water into your tank. But the same thing with ethanol and gasoline, biofuel additions to diesel fuel as well. They're both more hydrophilic, or they attract water. So we're holding more water in the fuel now than we used to. Also, diesel fuel by nature can hold more water with a higher temperature. So we are in, it's great for us when we do testing and prototyping because we have probably the worst geographical conditions in the US. So if it works in Florida, usually it works anywhere else in the United States.
Great. No, I appreciate that. Other questions? Yes, Steve?
Oh, well, I can understand how you feel, but commercial airlines, you know, they use jet fuel. They turn around rapidly. That usually is not a problem. But I think Kathy is here. She knows and understands fully that some of these single-engine airplanes that sit around for a long time, although they may be burning 100 octane fuel. What they do is you sit there and if you don't drain the fuel tanks, you will get that much. You'll get about eight ounces of water in some cases. And if you don't drain it, you're a goner.
Exactly. So we see that a lot, especially with diesel. And you get a little bit of diesel on the residential and the commercial side. So you have people from all different backgrounds seeing these same problems. And then if you leave it long enough, you're going to get the microbial growth between the water and the diesel, and that's where the problems really start to occur.
Anybody else? Greg?
I do have a couple of comments, questions. As long as the city is rotating their fuels, it should be good, or should they be tested anyway? Do you suggest an additive also on top of that?
I mean, the additive will get you an increase in basically efficiency and a better burn anyway. So we always recommend that. In terms of high-rotation fuel, it's been through a- a supply chain. So when it leaves the refinery, it goes to a storage facility, to a smaller storage facility, to the pump. That distribution chain can actually make your fuel dirtier. So we see a lot of fuel that should be clean coming out of the pump that really isn't. So I don't know if you ever hear, when you go to a certain gas station or a certain station, you get, don't go to that one. It's got a dirty tank. Some of them don't maintain the tank. Some of them don't care. It's at your own discretion really, but we do see dirty fuel coming just through the supply chain.
Well, is that something that you guys could come down and test our fuel and say, hey, let's do a free testing?
We have a mobile guy. He would come down and do a sampling on all the tanks, basically. And then you'll get a good indication of how your fuel is and whether you need to treat it or not. So...
So, um...
Yes, you got me.
So, there's not a state mandate or a federal mandate about checking the fuel?
It's really by industry. So, ACHA for Florida, for hospital care, they are very adamant about every six months testing their fuel and ensuring, because as you know, for a hospital, the worst-case scenario is death if you can't maintain your backup, mission-critical life systems. Second biggest issue is they have to emergency evac everyone out of that hospital. You can imagine how costly that would be. So...
What's that organization? I'm sorry, Audrey.
ACHA.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Audrey. Yes, go ahead.
Right. And if the city maintained a fleet, for example, we share fire district's fleet, DEP would have rules as to our fuel tanks.
Gotcha.
And that, I can assure you, DEP is very diligent on those.
Okay. Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you. Amy, did you anything?
I did have one.
Oh, yeah, great. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I should know this. Carl, the generator here for City Hall, LP or diesel?
It's diesel.
And do we rotate it out? Because I think that'd be one of the things that...
I can't personally answer that right now, but we can get that information to you. I know we run regular tests on it just to make sure it's operational.
Yeah.
But I have made a note, we will check on that. Because our fleet is, as the council knows, our fleet is relatively limited. And we do purchase our fuel through the fire department, through their tanks. But so, the diesel fuel in the generator is really where we would need to focus.
Right.
It would be worth testing as a worst-case basis.
Great, great. Fred?
And...
Oh, I'm sorry. Greg, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. You're on a roll, buddy. Go ahead.
Give a city clerk one of your cards, and I'll get ahold of you to have it tested at the fire department.
Perfect.
Where they get the fleet fuel from.
That's great. You're good?
I'm good.
Down this end of the bench? No? We're good?
Good.
Okay. Jeff, before I let you go, you know how we, people from Ann Arbor, Michigan, and Columbus focus on that? Ann Arbor, right? Columbus rivalry, also known as the Michigan-Ohio State game. Let me tell you something, you need to focus in on that University of New Hampshire main game, which is always the last game of the year, too. Jeff, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, you guys. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Bye-bye. Okay. So we're gonna move on to E, and we're gonna get a briefing by Bonita Springs Utilities. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jim Strzakanski, and...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're just speaking the mic when you guys get going for the folks at home. Thank you.
I'm Jim Strzakanski, and John Jenkins and I will make this presentation. We're told to make it fast, so we'll try and make it fast. Basically, if you look at our utility, we have a service area that's 79% in Bonita Springs, and 18% in Estero, and a little bit outside in Lee County. So you're by far the biggest part of our service area. We're member-owned, and we're not-for-profit. You know, some people say, who do we belong to? Do we belong to a group of people, or to a state, or what? We belong to the people who buy our water. So each of you has a piece of us. We have nine-member board of directors. We entered the wastewater business in 1991, and we have 120 people at BSU. Financial overview, like any other utility, we're very capital-intensive. We have a lot of money in operations and pipelines all over the place. As a matter of fact, you can see $271 million. We have operating revenue of $37 million last year, and we have long-term debt of $101 million. One of the interesting things is that we've redone some of that debt to save money, in addition to saving money anyplace else we can. So we haven't had a rate increase since 2010. And I don't think there's anyone else who has been able to do that. Another thing is that in the past year, our standard and poor's financial rating went from AA- to AA+. And we're the only small utility in Florida that has a AA+ rating. What are people saying about us? Besides the good financial part, we're the only, we're the only small water company in Florida that received four awards last year for operations and safety. And in addition to that, we recently received the award for the best tasting drinking water in southern Florida. So I hope you enjoy the taste. Some people say, should I put a filter on my house, or should I drink bottled water? It's all worse than ours. Ours is the best.
So who were the taste testers, by the way?
Right here.
Great. Thank you. John Jenkins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor Simmons, council members. John Jenkins, Bonita Springs Utilities. I'll just talk briefly about our facilities, and then a couple of topics that I thought might be of interest to you currently. On our water system, you may be interested to know, out at our offices on Terry Street, we actually have two plants co-located there. The original lime softening plant, which you can see is wells at about 100 foot deep. And then back in the early 2000s, the regulators, the utility community throughout the state kinda migrated to a more sustainable water source. And so we go deeper with our more, our newer RO facility to water level about 1,000 feet deep in the upper Florida aquifer. And that's a brackish water system. It's a little more difficult to treat, but it's a more sustainable source. And then we blend those two out the plant and send them throughout the city. On the wastewater side, we have two plants, the original plant up on Old 41, and the bioreactor out in the east side of 75. We've got 100% reuse, both in terms of reclaimed water that goes out and irrigates golf courses and lawns and common areas throughout the city, and our biosolids, which are not spread out on farms and other remote areas that you see running into issues at times. We have a dryer that converts that into pellets, and that's taken and used as fertilizer. And then, we're pleased that over a period of 10 years, from the mid-'90s to the mid-'2000s, almost 5,000 septic tanks were taken offline, particularly in the downtown area close to the Imperial River. And hopefully, we will continue to do that to the extent there are any other septic tank areas that we think it's financially feasible to extend service. We set rates based on our capital costs and our operating expenses, but it's always a good idea to do a little benchmarking and see how our rates compare to some of our neighboring utilities. Also, we're spending money on ongoing maintenance, which you don't wanna do is have deferred maintenance and have problems come up later. We wanna have, we consider ourselves a community resource, a partner for economic development. We wanna have facilities that are maintained for our current members, for new development, and we wanna have rates that are competitive for both those reasons.
John, can I stop? Just a quick question. When you look at that number at first glance, you'd say, okay, City of Naples, why are they so much cheaper? I think I have a theory, but it probably is wrong. Can you clarify why that's so cheap?
Well...
The City of Naples is pretty compact, for those that don't know. It's a very small area. And so really, when you think of Naples, it's a vast, vast area. But the City of Naples is very tight and compact. Is that why, John, or no?
Yes, that's part of the reason. A part also is, it's one of the older communities around. So what you have is investment that took place back in the '50s, '60s, and '70s. So facilities were much cheaper than they are to build today. So when you have those sort of legacy investments, the rates tend to be low.
Collier County, the whole city of Naples?
Most of what you consider north Naples is actually served by the Collier County system.
I was gonna say, and then let's jump to that Collier County number. That's the balance of the county exclusive of the city, correct?
Correct. Yes. And you see rates jump periodically, because a system that is older will eventually have to be replaced. And all of a sudden, you've got a major capital investment. And so, the rates correspondingly are gonna rise to help pay for that. So that may be what you see coming up in the future at the City of Naples.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Just, it's hurricane season, so I just thought I'd touch on our emergency management planning. We are a part of the National Incident Management System. That's a coordinated system with local governments, the city here, the county, the fire districts, in order to provide emergency response and recovery services. We have quite a detailed emergency response plan. And we do things periodically to harden our own facilities. We have an operations center out there off Wellfield Road, north of Morton. That has a full, it looks like a school cafeteria. It's got a big room, full commercial kitchen. It's got a lot of facilities out there designed to maintain our staff operations during hurricanes and other emergency events. Current issues, we've been working with the city on the downtown redevelopment area, which is coming along great, starting to really take shape down there. Our part comes early on in the process. So, we spent about $3 million working with your contractor, Wright Construction, as a part of the city's overall approach. And we're about finished with everything south of the Imperial River, and the rest of the surface improvements will be maintained. One of the topics, just to touch on, is lead and copper. We certainly have seen, it's been in the public eye, what's happened up in Flint, Michigan. So, we've been trying to reassure our residents on a number of issues. One is, we have a new distribution system. So, we really don't have any lead and copper in our system, other than what you're gonna see within the homes themselves. We blend our water sources between the lime softening, which is a more stable and less aggressive water, with the RO water. That helps maintain a situation in our pipes where you're not going to see some of the corrosion that's occurring up in Flint. We also have corrosion inhibitors, which, if you read some of the articles, that was also where there was kind of a breakdown in Flint. They changed their water source. They didn't address the corrosion issue. They didn't include some of the corrosion inhibitors that are pretty standard operating procedure for most utilities. And we, like all the utilities around here, have a water quality sampling plan. We, of course, monitor water that we produce on an ongoing basis. And then there's also a series of tests we do throughout the service area periodically over the months and years in order to monitor any lead and copper issues. Finally, sustainability efforts. I'll just mention briefly, we've got a compressed natural gas portion of our fleet that's up to 19 trucks this year. So they can use either gas or compressed natural gas, which is environmentally friendly. I touched on reuse. We also do things, conservation rates, that's to discourage excess water use by increasing rates at the high end of the usage, and some other improvements we make. Whenever we have an opportunity to change out equipment at our plants, we're always looking to be more efficient with our power usage. So, we're here today just to give you a briefing, but we're always available to answer any questions you have. And we're happy to do that, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have today. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you, gentlemen. Steve?
Yeah. John, I know you have 330 lift stations. A few of them are located in my community of Vanderbilt Lakes. During the season, I have never seen the trucks there so many times. It was like most every other day. And what they keep pulling out are diapers, dish towels, all that kinda stuff. And I can't imagine the cost to you guys for, you know, having to take care of that. Is there anything we can do to educate people on not to do that kinda thing?
Well, that's an ongoing effort. These so-called disposable wipes and flushable wipes oftentimes are not. There's certainly an industry effort in the water business to do something about that, and to try and coordinate with the manufacturers so that those are properly labeled and that something you pull off the shelf is either, in fact, flushable or not. We've sent out periodic updates in our bills to what's disposable and what's not. But I appreciate that offer. We'll think about if there's anything else that the city could do to help pitch in on that effort, because it is one of the major problems. And it's one of the leading contributors to sanitary sewer overflows, which is what happens when those lift stations back there.
Any other question I have? In terms of, I have a couple friends in Citrus Park, and I'm not happy with that water. I mean, I wouldn't wash my clothes in that water. But is there any negotiation at all about having them hook up with you guys at all?
Well, discussions have taken place periodically over the years. There is nothing going on right now. I'm not sure of the water quality out there. From what I've heard, they've made some investment in their water facilities. But right now, we don't have any current plans.
Okay.
In our long-term planning, we do consider whether or not they might tie into our facilities.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Counsel? Anybody else? Greg?
I just got a quick, a couple of quick questions. I know that you, in one of your slides, you said you drilled some new wells and stuff like that. And only because it's coming up on later on on mayor and council items, talking about the future of the DRGR and stuff like that. Do you guys see a problem with a shortage of water? Should we start purchasing this DRGR land and maybe partner with BSU to do this, to save the water, or to make wellfields out in the DRGR?
Well, on an overall basis, certainly, anything that would have a big impact on water, either water quantity or quality in the DRGR could affect us. On a short-term basis, our wells are at about 1,000 feet deep on average, and are not impacted by what may occur and might, in the DRGR, and what may affect the, you know, the superficial aquifer, because we're well below that in terms of our water source. What we're doing in looking at new wells, and you may have seen them over along Imperial, we've put in one new well, and we have one at our plant, and one at Southern Pine. So we're actually seeing a better water quality for our purposes, a little bit west of 75. So, and nothing that we're doing is gonna impact the water supply in the DRGR area. And it's an awfully big area. Ours is, our impact is pretty localized.
Right, right. No, thank you. Great, great question. Absolutely. Amy?
Could you just expand on any plans to connect the sewers in areas where they're not connected, particularly in the DRGRs where we're concerned about it?
Well, we're still talking to our liaison, Councilman Forbes, about this sort of unfortunate situation with the new development that occurred off Morton right out there in Sun Village. We'll see what we can do about that. You know, the horse has kinda left the barn. For the most part, we have identified the areas with septic tanks. If the opportunity arises, we'll try and pick those up and bring central sewer there. That in part depends on, is there really an environmental impact? If it's one unit per 10 acres out in the DRGR, and you've got some isolated septic tanks, it's going to be neither cost-effective nor is it gonna have much of an environmental impact to extend sewer in those areas. But we do have a couple of areas that we've looked at, and that we have in our planning stages for possible future, what we call gravity expansion projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
I saw you have the three new wells that you put in are the deep-water brackish wells. Is that because the shallower wells are underperforming, or because of expansion of more members?
Actually, the shallow wells work just fine. The Water Management District has limited us on our use of those wells. We would actually like to squeeze out a little more capacity from those wells, because we actually have a plant that's sized larger than our water supply. The lime softening plant is bigger than the use of the wells that we have, so we would like to mash that up. But for the most part, from a sustainability standpoint and our future planning, the wells will be in service to the RO system, and will be deeper to, consistent with Florida's move toward alternative water supply and a sustainable water supply.
And I know a couple of years ago, we were doing like a 50/50 mix of the two waters. Are we still at that 50/50, or are we, we're shifting more towards the brackish water?
A little bit more toward a RO, but still pretty close.
Well, I was gonna...
Fred?
I was gonna point out that Mr. Jenkins has been very cooperative, and we'll be back later talking about different things. But he's committed to working with the city to try and develop grant applications to help extend sewers. The problem that he... The problem that he eloquently explained to Carl and I the other day is that if we don't get help on some of these things, the connection fee for some of these areas, and those areas in question that we're talking about, are generally middle, low-middle income to lower. And you would be looking at a connection fee without some kind of help of $125 a month extra for 25 years. And that would be a tough pill for us to force upon someone if we kind of forced to issue, or they did. So, we're going to have to, we're devising strategies. There are grants frequently available, and whenever they come up, we're going to do some.
That's great, that's great. Yeah, let us know, John, on those grants, obviously, how we can be helpful, or anything that you need from us in those regards. Thanks. Pete?
Is, John, is the Water Management District concerned on the upper aquifer saltwater intrusion? Is that what they're concerned, why they want to keep your pace at a certain level?
That's part of it. Also, you recall the so-called water wars about 20 years ago up in the Tampa Bay area? What happened there was actually that the water withdrawals were impacting surface features. So, you had lakes drying up, you had rivers, the flow was being reduced. So, they were actually seeing impacts of a more direct type than simply, you know, what's going on underground. So, that was also part of what motivated the Water Management District and the legislature to move everybody toward this. And even BSU, back in the planning days, kind of recognized that with all the growth occurring here, it would probably be necessary to look at another water source besides the lower Tamiami.
Right. Anybody else? Anything else, John? Great, wonderful. Thank you, guys, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to F. Yeah, we're going to move on to F. Thank you, Steve. And Arlene, will you cue this one up for us?
Good morning, Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager. To give you a little bit of background information, as I introduce Dr. Margaret Banyan, during your strategic planning session, staff advised the council that we had completed the first phase of the evaluation appraisal report that is required through the Florida Growth Management Act. And we did receive our letter of confirmation back from the state. Our next task in this process is to adopt the state mandated changes. Those are required to be adopted by April 1, 2017. During the strategic planning sessions, council directed staff to reach out to FGCU to continue coordinating that process. Additionally, on your consent agenda item, you do have an amendment to the contract to extend those services, to move forward with those state mandated, the state required changes. Since that time, we've received a report from Tool Design Group on the Benita Beach Road vision. There is some opportunities within the comprehensive plan that would further preserve that vision, and quantify it through text amendment changes and mapping. So, we did ask Dr. Banyan to take a look at that as well, to see if that is a desire of the council, to move forward with some of, looking at some of that opportunities as well. We also know that there was optional amendments that FGCU had identified. And so, we did further ask for FGCU to look at additional tasks. So, the consent agenda item that you have would move forward with just the state mandated changes as amendment number one. The way our city attorney drafted the agreement, we would have the ability to do a change order, to do essentially Task B, or C, it's additional task for the Benita Beach Road visioning, and then moving on with the Task D of the optional items. So, we would be looking for some direction from council, once Dr. Banyan's able to go through her presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Banyan and her team.
Great, thank you. Welcome, welcome back. Good morning.
Thank you. It's, can you hear me okay? It's good to see everybody again. And what, I do have just a short presentation. There's really just about six or seven slides that I want to kind of lay out for you, and then have a discussion about, as Arlene said, about what you're looking for and what you would like to see happen. So, I also have with this morning Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering, and she is part of the FGCU team that will be working on this. So, first of all, just a quick review. The evaluation and appraisal review, as you all know, is required every seven years by the state. And that requires that cities and counties review their plans to assure that the comprehensive plan is consistent with state law. As we completed that review and shared with the council at that time, there were state mandated changes that were going to be required. That letter was sent to Department of Economic Opportunity, received at the end of March, and they responded and said that we have until April 1, 2017, to complete those amendments. So, that data's certain, that's not optional, you must make those changes. So, what I want to do is kind of lay out for you what that process would look like in the next few slides. So, there's, as Arlene said, kind of three different alternatives that we've identified for moving forward. You can pick one, you can pick all. And so, that's kind of the substance of the conversation. I'm going to talk first about state mandated amendments, then I will talk about Benita Beach Road visioning, and then finally, talk about the scoping the optional amendments. Okay? So, in terms of state mandated amendments, as you probably remember, we are required to, or you are required to make those changes based on the EAR. Many of those changes are fairly straightforward. References to state agencies, references to state legislation, so many of them are very straightforward. What is not quite so straightforward is the concurrency decision from you. I'll talk a little bit about what that decision has to look like. So, what we scoped here for you, in the budget that you see, just focuses on the text changes, references to state agencies, and facilitating that concurrency decision. I'll talk about that in the next slide. So, the deliverables would be text amendments, and we also think it's important to just do a quick kind of final report to document the process. And the process would kind of look like this. We would want to do one-on-ones with council. We would want to also do a council workshop, an LPA meeting, and public meeting, and then we would have to do council and LPA hearings to transmit the state mandated changes. Okay? Okay, so, I want to talk about concurrency a little bit, because that's a key decision that has to go along with the state mandated amendments. So, want to talk a little bit first about what concurrency is. So, concurrency is that cities are responsible for your level of service. And that level of service can be done by adding capacity, so adding parks, adding roads, that sort of thing. Or addressing, or addressing that capacity through other options. So, it also allows you to deny permits that would result in a failing level of service. So, that's the concurrency standard as it is. What the state did, and this is kind of the key change, is said, we're going to retain concurrency. Cities must retain concurrency for four things: potable water, sanitary sewer, waste, and drainage. Then they said, but cities, you don't have to do concurrency anymore for transportation, schools, and parks. So, that's the key decision that you'll have to make during this process. And where you have the, where you have the option of getting rid of concurrency, that has to be addressed in those amendments that are due by July, or, sorry, April 1, 2017. So, that is part of the decision that has to be made. A little bit more about concurrency options. So, your choice here for concurrency is to do nothing. You can leave concurrency as it is for schools, parks, and transportation, that's one option. And you, if you do that, you have to allow the applicant to add that capacity themselves. So, you can do binding agreements or fair share agreements. And that improvement has to be based on what the project is going to add, not a fail, not an existing failure of level of service.
How, quick question, how often do municipalities do that, choose that option?
Some are choosing to get rid of it, and some aren't. So, it's kind of up in the air, this is relatively new. So, some are choosing to retain, and some are choosing to not. So, there's pros and cons to each approach, and that's part of the process. You don't have to make that decision today. That's part of the process, as we've laid out, to talk with you more about what the options are.
Right, right.
And do a little bit more thinking into what other cities and counties are doing for concurrency, so you have lots of information when you make that choice.
Thank you, yeah, go ahead, Audrey.
I just want to point out that even if you maintain concurrency, you can still use alternative strategies.
Correct, yes.
Okay, good question. Great, no, thank you.
So, if you want to eliminate concurrency standards, just kind of the second option here, you would have to develop some different strategies. That might be a multimodal plan, it might be mobility fees versus impact fees. Those are just some of the things that cities and counties are looking into now. Just making sure I didn't miss anything, since I only have a few slides. All right, so, the second-
I threw you off track, sorry about that.
You did, you got me all nervous.
No questions until the end, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that, Margaret.
No problem. So, that would be kind of the state mandated changes, and that's what the process would look like. We would talk with you about what the options are for concurrency. We would have the council meeting, so that you could make that decision formally, and then we would move forward with any changes. Now, I want to do comment that if you do choose to eliminate concurrency, that's a lot more work, and there's a lot more consideration. So, we would have to come back with you, to you with a revised agreement, because we don't know standing here what the scope of that work looks like until we have that conversation with you. So, moving on, alternative B would be the Benita Beach Road amendments. And really, what we would be looking at is preserving and formalizing your vision for Benita Beach Road. That would be, again, the deliverables would be a final report, just to document the process, map changes, as well as text amendments to kind of go along with those map changes. As part of that process, we would, again, want to have a council workshop. We would want to have a workshop or a meeting with the LPA, formal meeting with council in public, in public meetings. And again, to transmit those changes, we'll have to do some hearings with, public hearing with council. Okay? And then the last kind of portion is kind of alternative C, and that what came up during the evaluation and appraisal report. So, during that time, there was a number of optional amendments that were on the table. There was lots of options. And so, there was a discussion with the LPA about holding a series of workshops with the LPA, talking with council about your direction for those optional amendments, and then moving forward with that process. We envision alternative C as really just, at this point, scoping what those optional amendments would look like, or sort of constrain those optional amendments. We anticipate you might want to take some optional amendments off the table. Don't look into this, don't address this issue, leave these areas alone, move forward with these. So, really, the, at this point, for alternative C, what we're looking at is just scoping what the optional amendments would look like. If you do choose to move forward, then we would have another discussion with you about what that would look like, and how those meetings might unfold. So, that is the conclusion of my presentation, and Alexis is also here to answer questions that you might have about the process.
Great, thank you. Now, it's time for questions, counsel.
Yes.
All right. Pete?
Well, how do you want to handle this? The actual item is in the consent agenda that relates to what Margaret's talking about. Should we talk about this now?
What do you think, Carl? What do you recommend? Counsel, what do you, what's your preference?
Might as well talk about it now.
Yeah, because we're going to pull it anyway to have discussion.
Now, I was going to say, no, go have a seat, then wait another three hours, then come on back up.
So, my, I mean, you know, to me, obviously, there's a lot of details and a lot of important aspects of concurrency, but I just, the old LOS standards, to me, they're a highway to sprawl. There's no question about that. So, I think Margaret, Dr. Banyan, is telling us, we need to look at that as a, because of the state mandate anyhow. So, obviously, we should do it. And I would also do the Benita Beach Road portion as well. And I would hold off on scoping Part C to a later date. There's no requirement, there's no time requirement on that.
Correct. So, the only time requirement you have is the state mandated amendments, April 1, 2017. That's the only requirement you currently have.
Correct. Okay. Fred, did you have something?
No, I, we'll touch on this when we get into the discussion of the tool vision, but I agree that that needs to be in this, but we have a little more work to do, I believe.
Okay.
But I would like to see Florida Gulf Coast heavily involved in some of the thought process that we go through.
Okay.
So, I applaud that being in this amendment.
Great. Mike? Steve?
Good.
I just want a couple of comments. No, I agree with what Councilman O'Flynn said about it, about the A and the B. I just, maybe throw in C now also, only because we've all been getting the emails, since we're talking about the comp plan, and comp plan amendments, we're all getting emails about the height and the supermajority. Maybe we would include it sooner than later to look at that option. Because just because we go-
To get it off the table.
Yeah, get it off the table, at least we're going to do some evaluations and some questions about it. So, it may be something that we can do sooner than later, instead of putting that off, and then this off.
Got you.
So, that'd be my recommendation.
I would agree with that.
Amy?
I concur that, you know, certainly go forward with the state mandated proposal. I do think we need a discussion about concurrency, because it's not clear what the consequences of the two choices are. I'm in favor of having some kind of interaction on the Benita Beach Road visioning study, but we haven't even looked at it as a council. So, we might want to just look on certain sections of the Benita Beach Road visioning study to focus on, at least initially, or maybe it should be done all at the same time, I'm not sure. And I too think that we should go through the scope of optional amendments that you had listed in your report, that we, as a council, could say, look at this and don't bother with this. I doubt we'll have more than a couple of them come out of there, but I could be surprised. So, you're just, again, getting our understanding of what we're going to focus on in the future. But we're talking about a long-term relationship, so, but start with the first thing, and then go forward. That's my opinion.
Greg?
Yeah, that was kind of my sentiment also, is it, and I apologize, is it a pay-as-you-go, or here's the money upfront, or as far as the contract? Because if it's going to be a long-term, like, option C may be a year down the road, six months down the road, or maybe just a couple hours here or there versus the whole thing.
Or is it free?
That would be good for you, I think. So, the way we've, we've kind of scoped this is the, what you have before you is just the amount for Option A. Roughly $41,000, that includes cost reimbursable items. So, you really, I think you really don't want to go with a pay-as-you-go.
Okay.
Because we know that there's a lot of scope creep, and the expenses can build up. So, I think it's better and more clear for you, if you have a fixed fee, which is what this first state mandates are, fixed fee, then you have some assurance that that work gets done within that scope and that budget amount. So, in terms of Benita Beach Road, you can, we still would have to come back with a budget. You have kind of a preliminary scope in here, as an idea about what we would do. We would still have to come back with, to you, with an amendment to the agreement to cover that amount. We don't anticipate it being a large amount of money. So, that's kind of up to you, you can- You can execute it now, you can execute it after you discuss. You've got lots of options there. As long as, as well, C, you can delay, delay three months, start now, up to you.
My rec-
I'm just saying, in the consent agreement, it's just for the first stage, right? I mean, that's what we would, if we just keep it on a consent agreement, we would do the mandated agreements. And this, we can go to the other ones at a later time.
Our, our choice.
Our choice.
Yeah.
My recollection of reading what you had in C is that council would first meet first to discuss and vet which one of those, was it 144 items, we were interested in, as a cost efficiency and a time efficiency manner.
Right.
So I'm just picking up on what Greg was saying. I would, I would include that now and I would do B, only because the train's leaving the station on Beach Road. And I agree with Fred. I mean, let's get your input with respect to that.
So, so again, yes, you're, you're right. Option or alternative C.
Right.
Because we have so many options.
Right.
We changed the language, alternative C.
Yep.
Really is scoping. And, and the first step in that scoping would be to have a workshop with council. And, and then we, and then we go from there. So there's really not, not much, we did include or just had previously thought about wanting to engage the LPA in that scoping process. That was how we had left the previous conversation. But certainly, we could just do a couple council workshops and, and then go from there. I mean, there's that option as well.
Before we take up everybody's time with it.
Right.
Right. So I think we-
Does that sound logical to everybody?
Absolutely.
So let's get those scheduled.
As I understand it, we will do the Amendment 1 today and then we'll bring back Amendment 2 and 3 with the prospective amounts, once we have numbers and it's approved by FGCU's legal council. And then I just want council, just for a big picture item, to consider the fact that you're also doing another transmittal comp plan amendment and that's the railroad. And that's without FGCU, but it is something that community development staff is working on and it is time consuming. July 5th, or July 6th is your hearing.
Thanks Audrey. Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Banion and FGCU again for the fabulous work they have done on the year. So just one man's, thank you.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Arlene?
I just want to clarify too, we did talk about scheduling adoption hearings and public hearings and keeping in mind that April 1 is a deadline. We would, as our best as possible to keep within the schedule, have as many public meetings during the January to March timeframe so that all of our traveling residents can participate as much as possible as well. So that, that would be our goal. We don't want them to feel that those are rushed. I know some people, but the intent is we still need to meet that April 1 deadline, but we will push some of that as best as we can to that timeframe so that everyone can feel they're a part of the public process.
Sure, sure. Pete, do something else? Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Carl, please.
I feel it, I'm coming upon myself to, to mention to council that during the last process, the consultants, Dr. Banion and others, were receiving individual phone calls from concerned residents, which took a considerable amount of their time and actually made it more difficult for them to get their work done, dealing with those individual phone calls. I would recommend that we consider that if residents have concerns, that they either put them in an email, okay? Or if they want to call somebody, that they can certainly call the council members or staff and we're happy to be communicating with the consultant on those issues. But to have individual residents, which could be a number of them, calling the consultant directly, it is disruptive to the process in terms of getting the work product back out. I know that may sound bad to certain people, but we're just trying to keep the process manageable for everyone.
Yeah, no, absolutely, go ahead Pete.
I think what you say makes sense, but I think it should be in context, which is that came out of an understandable confusion by residents with respect to what the process was. And we obviously are not going to have that this time. So I, I would be surprised if that were an issue.
Unless, of course, you want the phone calls, right?
Plead the 5th.
Yeah, plead the 5th.
I, I do say that it, I think sometimes the, they really want to hear from you too.
Oh, of course.
So the more engaged you are in the process, the more you can educate residents and, and that kind of a partnership is really helpful, I think, not just from a, from a time management standpoint, certainly, as well as from just an involvement standpoint, so.
Yeah, yes Fred.
Well, I would, I would agree with what Councilman O'Flynn said. I, I think you're going to have less of this. I think if you shut this off in total, you're going to have more of a pushback than you would anticipate. But what I would suggest is something like this. For example, if Worthington Country Club is interested in talking to Dr. Banion, which they might be, it's the chair, it's got to be with the full agreement of the External Affairs Committee and it'll be somebody from the committee and it's got to be approved by the chairman. If BIA wants to talk, it's got to be somebody number one or number two in BIA. I think if you do that, you'll still allow some communication, but it'll get squashed down. But then if, if it becomes a problem, then we could do something about it. But I think if you just turn the spigot off, it, you may get pushed back, as I call it.
Steve? Yes?
Why don't we just have, you not accept any calls except it's from a councilman?
Staff too.
Why, you know? Huh? Or staff? Or staff, yeah.
I actually think we're making more out of nothing at this point. I honestly do not believe we're going to have this issue. The state mandated stuff is straightforward.
Right.
The concern that residents had, nothing to do with Dr. Banion, although she ended up on the receiving end, last time, was that they were told that something that was mandated was much broader than it actually was. And that led to months of confusion. And that's, that's what happened. That's just not in the mix now. It's just not in the mix, so.
Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, contrary to what Councilman Forbes said, I don't think the city manager said, we're turning the spigot off. He just wants to limit that funnel, instead of it being to Dr. Banion and FGCU, it's to staff or the council itself. And, yeah, that's what he said. So I, I don't think we're shutting it off. And kind of contrary to what Councilman Forbes is saying, I like your idea of, okay, if Worthington wants to say something, you have a spokesman. What about for the other people who don't live behind gated communities? Like in my district, I mean, I don't, my neighborhood has 15, 20, 30 people that may want to be involved. We're not going to pick a spokesman, so.
Right.
I, I think that what city manager says, we direct it towards your district or staff at, at the county, I mean, at the city, and then they will go and talk to Dr. Oban, or Dr. Banion about it because we may hear it, or I may hear five times, that this is the same sentiment. Why should she have to hear it? I can relay it once to the city manager, then relay it once to the doctor.
Why don't we just play the ball where it lies? If we have an issue with the-
Exactly. But I, I do agree with staff that they shouldn't directly contract FGCU.
Yeah, so, and, and we're, I think you're right. I mean, we're not going to stop thinking in this process about the context. And so I think where we drew the line last time was, it, it costs a lot of time for me to go out to individual meetings. That's really a time killer. And there was some pressure to do that last time, to continue to go to individual meetings. So that really, I think, is we don't have that scope. I'm not going to go to a bunch of, a bunch of neighborhood meetings. I would like to, because I enjoy them really, but it's just not, it's just not possible within this scope. So I think that we, I will seek direction from staff if I have questions, if that's fair.
Sounds good.
Great. Amy, did, anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion or anything?
Yeah, do we need?
Since you pulled the consent agenda item, if you would make a motion, you're that, or you could wait till the consent side.
Let's do it now. So what's the motion Audrey?
The motion would just be to, you heard the presentation and that you're approving the amendment to the research services agreement with FGCU for Phase 2 and asking that we also bring back Phase 3 Benita Beach Road visioning, as well as Phase 4, certain aspects of it, for you to decide that in a change order number 2 or amendment number 2.
I would move that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Hi.
Councilman Slade?
Hi.
Mayor Simmons?
Hi.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Hi.
Councilman Gibson?
Hi.
Councilman O'Grumby?
Hi.
Okay, great. Motion carries, thank you. And I, I think Greg did add an O to your name, Obanion, but that sounds, that sounds all right too.
I tried to.
We can call him Flynn and call you Obanion, how's that?
O'Dewitt.
An O'Dewitt, right. Thank you, Doctor, very much. Thank you very much. And please give our best to President Bradshaw. Thank you so much. Okay, G, we're going to Alexis Crespo, yes?
Hi. Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager. So we are bringing forward Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering. The city is engaged in a contract with Waltrip Engineering to do updates to our land development code. Some of those are still carryovers from the land development code of Lee County. The scope included looking at the aesthetics, intense uses, and looking at design standards to enhance them further. We post, we were engaged in the contract and postponed it in March due to the election because we wanted to go through the visioning study, the visioning, and get some more information from council on how they like to move forward. We'd like Alexis to give you some background on the amendments that we have done through the contract and what's still left to do and seek the direction of council. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. Alexis, hello there.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be back. Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering. I also have just a brief presentation to kind of walk you through where we've been the last four to five years in amending the land development code and then some of the ongoing projects we, we had put on hold, as Arlene noted, as well as opportunities for other enhancements. So just as a general overview, we just talked about the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, which is your vision document and really sets the long-range, big-picture goals for development and redevelopment. Your land development code is really the nuts and bolts and really guides how the built form of the city is going to evolve. Something that's important that we really focused on is the fact that your land development code guides development not only of vacant sites that have never been developed before, but it also dictates how redevelopment is going to occur. Due to the age of some of the buildings and plazas within the city, a lot of those sites are ripe for redevelopment and we want to make sure the codes are going to ensure that that redevelopment happens in a very aesthetically pleasing way. And that also the, the new uses that may enter into those existing developments are appropriate, considering the surrounding context of the areas. So when we talk about your land development code, a lot of the focus on the amendments thus far has been Chapter 3 and Chapter 4. Chapter 3 are your design standards, which dictate your architecture, how the buildings are going to look, the required number of trees along the perimeter of projects, how stormwater is handled. Chapter 4 is also very important because it handles the uses allowed in your zoning districts. It involves the process and procedures that the council and staff undergo to review different zoning requests, special exceptions, et cetera. And what we really focused on the last several years was the fact that Benita inherited their code from Lee County when they incorporated it. So we've been undergoing this process to make what was a Lee County land development code specific to Benita and that addressed the enhanced visual appeal the city wants to see and also the uniqueness of the city as opposed to unincorporated areas of the county, which are obviously very different. So some of the things that many of the council is aware, we've worked on, this kind of started with looking at some intensive uses, including social services. We looked at this in 2012, 2013 and we created supplementary standards for more intensive social services, such as homeless shelters was on the docket at that time. And not only did we look at regulations for separation of those uses, how to buffer them, we also incorporated operational standards to make sure that if that intensive use should come onboard in the city, that it was going to be operated very clearly and in accordance with some very straightforward regulations. Something we did that was a little bit more on the aesthetic side of things was create supplementary regulations to guide the development and redevelopment of big box or large-scale retail. We put together a very comprehensive set of standards to guide how the building would look, how people are going to get from their vehicles to the front of the store, areas for employees to take their breaks. We even got down to a unified architectural theme for the garbage cans. And this did win an award for the city of Benita Springs from the Florida Planning and Zoning Association due to the comprehensiveness of that amendment. And then the most recent one is the US 41 overlay that we just completed last year, I believe. You had standards for Benita Beach Road and Old 41, but there was nothing guiding development and redevelopment along US 41 in a way that really addressed the fact that this is a major gateway corridor to the city. So we did implement higher standards for landscaping. We wanted to limit certain uses and ensure that more auto-oriented uses and intensive uses underwent more extensive review. And also always try to do a menu approach, so there's some flexibility while we're bringing on heightened standards. We want to make sure that there's the flexibility for the private sector to implement good design and not be locked into a stringent box. So some of the things that we have ongoing and we're up for consideration is looking at your use groups and your zoning district regulations. There's a lot of antiquated uses in the code dating back to the 1970s and 80s when it was first developed. There's also been a lot of evolution in certain uses, such as non-store retailers due to the internet sales. There's a lot happening in terms of non-residential uses that need to be better regulated and, and the use groups really need to be massaged to acknowledge the new uses that have evolved over time. What we also always see when we look through the code is that the use groups are antiquated and somewhat disorganized. An example is personal services group 4 includes massage parlor, tattoo parlors, and tax preparation services. And they're all lumped together in the same group. And they're just very different in terms of hours of operation, where they're located, what kind of patrons are there. So we need to look at those use groups and better organize them and then decide what zoning districts they should be allowed in. And then there's also a lot of room to consolidate the use groups because it's a very lengthy part of your code and somewhat cumbersome for the staff to implement. Benita Beach Road West, this kind of goes along with the tool design study, could be something a little further down the road to implement overlay standards unique to that area to the west of US 41 because it's more beachy, more tourist oriented, there's need for enhanced mobility there that's different from the other side of Benita Beach Road. And so we could look at enhancing an overlay for that area. And then we're always looking at direction from council to create enhanced standards if there's certain uses, certain developments you're seeing coming onboard where there's opportunities to do a better job and create again a menu approach to ensure higher quality development. There's certainly great opportunities to bring back concepts like that to council through the LDC amendment process. So why now? We've said this to the previous council, we like to be proactive versus reactive. You don't want to wait till an application's filed. That's not what the council wants to see. You want to have that code in place before it comes onboard. We're in a very strong economic climate now, there's increased development pressure, so we want to get in the front of that wave as far as being behind it. And there's also a lot of infill redevelopment being proposed along your major corridors that we want to make sure we're addressing. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Great. Council? Going once? Twice? You're off the hook? Thanks Alexis. Okay, let is, yeah, let's move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your preference here?
Mayor, I have a brief question, so I'd like to take B.
Yeah, B, okay, we'll pull B. Carl, you were saying something, do we, for the, for G, we're okay, right? We don't-
Just to advise, we do have a continuing contract existing, so we'll continue to bring forward, as, as our normal process, a review of a proposed ordinance or a, or a next task to, probably the uses would be the next one we're going to jump on. We'd bring that to you and you would then direct staff to work on that and go through the normal ordinance process. So we're going to continue that process forward.
Okay, okay, very good. And we, and we pulled B?
B, and if there's no further-
C and E. C. C. E.
F and G.
You want to pull F and G?
F and G.
In F and G. Okay.
F and G.
In F and G. There we go. All right. So it looks like we're pulling B, C, E, F, G.
Move to approve the rest.
Motion, okay. I'll second, yeah, all right.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilman Slackton.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Horrigan.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye. Okay, Steve, item B.
Yeah. If my memory serves me correct, and if I missed it in the presentation by Roots, forgive me, but it appeared that there was some kind of an agreement between Roots and the Lions Club that you would give them donations based on the amount of money that they lost, not necessarily all that money, but is that, had that, has that occurred?
We did not talk about giving them a direct donation, but we had met with them about working cooperatively with them on maybe a different event. We talked about a farm-to-table event that would introduce that the farmer's market was coming and some sort of a dinner that the Lions Club would help us with. And then we also talked about them coming to the farmer's market with a booth and looking for donations from the patrons that came each week. Maybe if everybody gave a dollar, and let's just assume we had 600 people a week come times 26 weeks, that could raise a substantial amount of money. But we were unable to do that for two reasons. One was we're not allowed under the current ordinance to have a non-for-profit organization have a booth at the market, so that's why, along with the city, we're requesting that you consider that. And secondly, they didn't feel they had the volunteers at the time to be able to come and staff a booth. But we would, again, welcome that and would love to have them be a part of that.
So there was no joint participation at that last year?
There was not. They just couldn't come up with the volunteers to do it, and again, we weren't allowed under the permit to be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Fred.
Did you ask the city to change it so they could do that?
We discussed, Laura Taylor, Communications Director, during many meetings with both groups, we discussed how they could work together. We did talk with them about having the Lions Club operate at the local Roots market. At the time, the Lions Club was not interested in having just a booth at their market, so the two groups were not interested in working in that manner to move forward. They did talk about doing a farm-fresh charity dinner, but to my knowledge, nothing has happened with that.
And thank you for that, Laura. And what is different this time around with this?
The only difference is the applicants have decided they'd like to amend their application after hearing discussion from you at the last meeting. We talked, she did indicate that she would like to have a nonprofit, whether it's the Lions Club or other local nonprofits. So we added that into the request for this agenda item so that they can have two nonprofits participate if council allows them to.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
For clarification, the original request before you before was for a flea market from Roots. Their major effort there was to try to get nonprofit booths in the mix, which the ordinance does not allow under a farmer's market. To resolve that issue without changing the ordinance, staff is here today to recommend their amended application, which is back to a farmer's market, not a flea market, farmer's market only, and the council would authorize, given your authority, authorize two nonprofit booths as a part of that farmer's market mix for Roots. We saw that as a compromise.
Go ahead, Steve.
No, no. I'll do.
And just want to point out that the farmer's market will remain intact. It's really up to the private property owner to decide use of their driveway, if they want to have Girl Scouts, if they want to have an entity utilizing their driveway. This would just allow it, in that special event, to allow it, but it's really the property owner.
Okay, and then I guess I find myself asking the question, okay, so with the Lions Club, they're allowed a booth? Is that enough to accomplish what the Lions Club's looking to accomplish? A booth is not, I don't think, what you're looking for.
No. The Lions Club, when we were there, and I was down there physically myself for about seven seasons, when we were there, we took over the whole place. And we had 40 or 50 vendors. And then we were taken over by local Roots and kicked off the premises. And then we went to the Commons, and then we went to the racetrack, and then we were at the property on Pennsylvania Avenue. Obviously, we took up a lot more space than one booth, so that obviously is not sufficient. We obviously had fresh vegetables and marketplaces, but we also sell, I'm a vendor, and we sell other commodities besides fresh vegetables and fruits. I personally sell items made out of seashells and clothes and things like that, and we have other commodities besides fresh fruits and vegetables, although we raise fruits and vegetables on our property. So one booth is not sufficient as we have many other types of commodities.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Pete, go ahead, Pete. I'm sorry, sorry, just a minute.
I'm a little confused about what we're doing here. Is this a council discussion or is it public comment? Or is it one big kind of mishmash?
Well, I think what we should, I mean, if we're going to continue, we should have the motion to approve or to approve second and then have discussion.
Among us and then as appropriate.
Yeah, and if we have questions of the vendors.
Sure, we can do, yeah. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve B.
To approve B?
Just to go for further discussion so we can talk about it.
Second for further discussion.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second discussion. Sorry, should have done that before. Thank you, Peter.
I got to, I do have a question.
This is council discussion.
Yeah. Could we have a council discussion? It's just what we normally do.
Yeah.
Right. The public does not have a right to have comments.
Well, it's not a matter of rights, it's our normal process.
Right.
There will be time for public comment. If the public could sit down and, we'd appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Great. All right, counsel.
As it goes for the ordinance, I guess my question is, is does the ordinance only allow one farmer's market in the city of Benita Springs? Or can there be seven of them every Saturday?
There can be seven or eight of farmer's markets, but farmer's market, which is a Land Development Code provision, is very restrictive because, again, it's to stop food deserts, it's to provide sustainability for the area, and it's not sunsetted, as opposed to outdoor flea markets, which was to help in economic time fill up park, literally filling up parking lots until they had people there, and that's only supposed to be in existence till 2020.
So the point being is that the Lions Club can, the Lions Club can have a farmer's market if they find a spot, any day of the week, Saturday included.
If they limit themselves to a farmer's market venue, but they'd have to stay within the restrictions of a farmer's market, and it does not appear that they wish to stay within those restrictions.
But then there could be a flea market. They could do either one. And my point being is if local Roots gets approved for the promenade, for whatever they want to do, whether it's a flea market or a farmer's market, and then the Lions Club says, "We'd like to have a flea market, farmer's market at the dog track site," they can do it on the same day, no problem.
They can do it on the same day. What I would need to point out to you is the flea market, if we have a flea market permit for the Shop Local, which is on Benita Beach Road, that would not allow the farmer's market, the Lions Club's flea market, to operate on Benita Beach Road. They can still operate their market. They are currently operating a market that is like a flea market on their property due to the property allowing that through their zoning. They don't have to come through for a permit on their own property. So if local Roots had a flea market or a farmer's market on 41, the Lions Club could still apply for a market permit. But if the local, the Shop Local has a permit for Benita Beach Road, there are only two flea market permits allowed per year and only on 41 and Benita Beach Road. I have talked with the Lions Club. I spoke with Bob Hilliard last week, and I made him aware of the fact that we had another applicant coming through. I know he's left for the day. He did say that he has no problem with that, he would work with them. At this time, we do not have an application in for the Lions Club to operate a flea market on.
Neither one.
On Benita Beach Road. They are currently operating in the downtown area for a farmer's market on Wednesdays. That is an annual permit. It will not be affected. The Lions Club also can continue to operate the market that they have on their property on Saturdays, regardless of your action on these two permits. The only difference will be if the Lions Club decides to operate a flea market after, if both of these groups were allowed to have flea market permits in a different location than they're already operating it. That is the only time there would be a conflict.
But their goal is to return back to the promenade.
The promenade is not interested at this point in allowing the Lions Club to have the market on their property.
I just like, having asked for all this material, I think all of us got it, the whole history. It's pretty obvious that this, call it what you want, legislative system here that's in place with respect to this is a very recent vintage. So I don't, you know, it's all interesting to me, but I mean, to me, it's a question of problem solving and how we get to yes on this. And having looked at the file, the Lions Club's been around, to use a word, forever. They built up the Saturday flea market. If you look at the documents from just a few years ago, when they were at the promenade, at that time, there was reluctance stated by staff with respect to, happened to be with respect to the Lions, about creating a system that allows non-bricks-and-mortar operations to compete with bricks-and-mortar operations. In other words, we can be cannibalizing other business in time. So that came in, but the Lions didn't have at that time, they were just kind of operating, so they were given a permit under a law that was put in place just at that time, a few years ago. And then, as things evolved, the way I read it, the new operator of the promenade came in, they have done a fantastic job, the new operator of the promenade. One thing led to another, and then we're seeing now another iteration of this. And this very good commercial outfit came in and stepped in with respect to there, and basically, the law was changed to accommodate that. All right. So now we have a law that talks about farmer's market, we have a law that talks about flea markets, the farmer's markets and a flea market. I mean, you know, the last application by the applicant here two weeks ago was for a flea market, right? Now it's changed to a farmer's market. Anyhow, that's just trying to be helpful, my review. I wouldn't read too much into, I mean, this was all done recently by the last council in the middle of a recession, responding to what the Lions had or didn't have, responding to other people and what they wanted. So that's that. I'd make one point here. There was, in the public comment this morning, a presentation by the applicant here with respect to this extremely impressive application in terms of talking about all the charities that they have worked with. And here we have in town a charity that has, as a result of their old farmer's flea, whatever you want to call it, market, donated tens of thousands of dollars. And for the life of me, I would wish that those two very good organizations, I mean, we've seen the pedigree of this local Roots and what she's talked about and what, you know, how she wants to work with and has worked with nonprofits. To me, two and two can be six here, and these two organizations can work together, both of which are committed, we hear, to working, one is a nonprofit, the other one is committed to working with nonprofits. And I would wish that they would go back and figure out how to make two and two six as opposed to continuing to argue. And then everybody would be in a good position. They don't have to do anything, but I would like them to consider doing that.
I think that's very well said, very well said. Steve?
Yeah, Peter, that was very well said, and, but I do know that one thing we all need to remember, that Laura Taylor has exhausted every possible avenue. She has worked diligently with both groups, and, I don't know. It's a tough situation, but.
Yeah, I agree. It's a tough situation, but, kind of the way I look at it, we, I don't believe in putting off vendors or local Roots or either one of the two, anticipating the Lions coming up with a plan or a application. As Laura said, right now, there is no, there is not an application in, I mean, so it should be voted on.
But we've heard from the Lions today, I mean, obviously, they're concerned, I think, to try to work together.
I think they should work together, but I'm just, I'm referring to, to, in my opinion, to deny this, to wait on the Lions to see what they're going to do would be irresponsible.
Well, I think the question would be how long? I agree with your concept.
I think we've asked them to work together. I think the former council had asked them to work together. I think Laura Taylor is trying to get them to work together. From what I observe, I think what the Lions Club would like to be is at the promenade, and it's not within our responsibility to direct a private business, how they run their business. They have, the applicant has a contract with the promenade owners, and I think that we really would be in a bad situation to deny the permit at this point. We could continue to ask them to cooperate, and maybe we can come to some solution, but I don't think we can go any other direction but to go forward with what's been recommended by staff.
Good point.
And Laura, at this point, what's our timeframe? Let's just say hypothetically, we were to table this. When is, when is our D-Day? When is?
Drop dead.
Drop dead, right. Need to make a decision.
I would have to speak with the market organizers. They're both applying for, you have two markets before you today, and their markets start in October, but I know they do work early to try to get their vendors set up so that vendors don't go to other markets as it is a business, so they have to make sure they line their vendors up for their spots.
Sure. But I mean, this does not have to be denied or approved today.
It's council's pleasure.
Okay.
Well, and I would like to see the ordinance rewritten so that way only a Benita nonprofit could get the permits.
Okay.
I think that'd be a fair way of, you know, making them kind of work together, and it may not even be the Lions Club. I mean, just a Benita nonprofit.
And that's just the outdoor flea market ordinance, not the farmer's market?
No, both. I mean, we're basically allowing a company from not, you know, outside Benita to come into Benita and compete with local businesses.
Okay, because the farmer's market ordinance, which is in the Land Development Code, is specific to private farmer's markets where a nonprofit doesn't even have to meet the criteria of that particular ordinance.
Yeah, that's what's in place now by the old council. Yeah, we understand that.
Yeah, I would look into changing that one also.
So that it would apply to nonprofits and only nonprofits would be able at.
Because otherwise, if you want to have a farmer's market, you know, buy a piece of property and make it a business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Fred.
Well, I agree with Mike and Councilman O'Flynn. In addition to that, if we were to pass this, or when and if we did, I'm probably going to propose an amendment or an additional clause to the agreement, and that would be that the operator of this market cannot regulate the people that have booths in there. Like, for example, on the other days of the week when you can have a, some type of a stand, if they go to another location and have a stand, I don't want them to be, lose their position at the promenade or any other place in the town. Because that's regulating your local, it's kind of almost, I view it as a kind of a collusion of, if you don't want to agree to only sell here, even on another day of the week, you can't play here, and I don't think that's right, especially affects our local, our local little vendors and their, you know.
Well, I, go ahead, Steve.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to move the issue because we have a motion and a second.
Well, yeah, no, and I would like, we do. Yeah, no, I would like, we do have a motion, we do have a second, and I would like to, with all these questions, I don't know how we can possibly pass this today, in my mind.
I disagree.
Amy, I see you rolling your eyes, and I know Greg disagrees, but we've got a lot of unanswered questions here.
We're not going to be changing ordinances at this time because I think all the things that have been brought up are quite complex. And we don't even, can't even anticipate the unintended consequences of what's been proposed by any of these suggestions. I really think we should go forward on this. The consequences of passing the flea market at Rhodes is that we can't have another flea market on Benita Beach Road. And if we're concerned about the Lions Club, they, I don't think they ever pointed out the fact that they wanted to have a flea market on Benita Beach Road. The consequences of passing the promenade applicant is that they have a contract with a private entity that I think we should execute on. And no matter what we do, we can't make the promenade, excuse me, I'm on antihistamines. We can't make.
It's like the commercial. They say it a lot of different ways.
Yeah, I know. It's bad. I'm struggling here. We can't, I don't think we should or could or would want to force a private entity to make a business decision contrary to what they want. I don't think that's a proper role for our government, for our city government. So I think we should move forward on both of them. If we want to take them separately, that's fine with me. And if we want to vote them down, that's, you know, that's our prerogative. But, you know, let's just make a decision. And if we want to address these ordinances that we think are dated or out or should be looked at, I'm not, I don't have any disagreement with that, but I think it just would take us too long because it's not a simple, straightforward things that are being proposed here.
Well, Amy, I think those points are very well taken. And I agree with you, up to the point of this is not D-Day for having to make this decision. So I'll just add that. Greg?
I just, I agree and I disagree. I think they've got to move on. This is the second week we've had them come, or second meeting, we have them come back. They've also amended it to allow two non-for-profits in their, I guess, house to do this. And it may be a different story, had the Lions Club or any other nonprofit come back with the application. It's not like, like the last meeting, the Lions Club didn't know about it. They didn't get to speak on it. We're two weeks into it now, still no applications. And as far as what I've heard, still no plan or no idea if they're even going to do an application. And as far as, you know, changing the ordinance, there's an application before us right now. To change the ordinance right now would, I think, would be irresponsible on our part because we've got an application on there. If we don't like what's going on now, let's change it for the future. But we have applications on the, on the dais right now that we should be voting on.
Okay. Steve, anybody else? Further discussion, Fred?
Well, I agree with what you said. I think we should.
We're not, there's, look, there's no, we do not have to make a decision today. I know they, people would like us to make a decision today. We don't have to make a decision today. And this isn't going to alter any progress here. This is not going to slow anything down or speed anything up. And we have a lot of unanswered questions. I know they've come back for a second time. That's very nice. However, this is a big decision, and we are not bound to date specific to make a decision today. We just aren't. So there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have one more question. We keep asking about these questions. I don't even know what the question is. What answers are we looking for? That if the Lions Club's going to do it or not? Is that the question? Is that the wholehearted question? Is the Lions Club going to have an application on Beach Road or US 41? Is that the only question that we need answered?
I've got a simple request. No one has to do anything about it. And that is for the two groups to try to work together. That's my simple request. They don't, they can say, we have our legal rights, we have no intention of doing it. All right? And I, that's, that's fine. I mean, not fine, but I mean, that's perhaps their legal right. So that's what I would ask. And I would just drop a footnote on something else. There's a notion here about private property rights and all this, and I think you're making a fair point about what's in play here. But this is a system that was just created by this council. Three years ago, no one had the right to have a flea market or a farmer's market. They put in place a provision on the flea markets that said only one on one road, one on the other, creating virtual monopolies, perhaps properly, all right, with respect to that. So government is in this business. So the notion that we're government, we can't be in the business, we're in it. All these groups, whether it's local roots or Benita, the farmers, or this new great organization with respect to the roads, they're, they're operating under the rules and coming in under the rules that government has created because government is in the business. So to say government shouldn't be in it is kind of, wait a minute. We created this system.
No, I think what Amy was referring to is like telling the promenade to say, you will give it to the Lions Club.
I'm not in any way telling anybody. I'm asking people to try to step up and go beyond the technical legalities and, and really realize that this is impressive commitment from local roots to nonprofits. They don't have to do a thing. There's nothing they have to do, but I'm asking them to consider reaching out to the Lions and working together with the organization that has created this franchise that they sit above as a result. That's all. No one has to do anything.
I agree with that, and I guess to your answer, I think Laura's tried to do that over the past year.
I understand that. I understand that.
That's all. I just don't want to keep kicking his can.
Laura doesn't have to get involved in this.
And do we have time to rewrite the ordinances before D-Day, as the mayor puts it?
And the issue is, you have two ordinances, outdoor flea market, regulatory, farmer's market, land use. The farmer's market is the one I also have a concern about. Outdoor flea market, I think, is an easy, we could get that done in a couple of weeks, six weeks. I have more consternation with the farmer's market, and that is because we also have certain preemptions under state law when it deals with agriculture. So if it's a pure agricultural issue, the farmer's market and agrotourism, you know, the farm-to-table concept, that's where there may be some issues that make it a lot more difficult. Plus, as a land use ordinance, it would need a different type of advertisement, which just takes more time.
So would that put us, you know, too long or is it doable?
I would say too long.
Is it germane to do that while there's applications out there?
You can. You have not reviewed it, approved it yet. Does it create a problem or potential liability? Absolutely. But does it mean that it definitely is total, I mean, obviously, I think the applicant should know that this has been an issue within the city of Benita Springs and bringing the issue up. Again, this is not a zoning request. This is a farmer's market.
And I'd like to make a motion that we change the ordinances.
Let's vote on the first, this first, Mike, and then we can do that. All right, there's been a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gibson?
No.
Councilwoman Forbes?
No.
Councilwoman Corumba?
You're going to have to repeat the motion.
As I understand, the motion is to, to approve a permit for local roots to operate a farmer's market and allowing with the community development conditions that were placed upon it and allow them also the two nonprofits.
Aye.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakto?
Aye.
Okay. Does not, the no is four to three, correct? Okay. Mike, you wanted to?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance and the land development to make it where it has to be, the permit needs to be gotten by a Benita nonprofit.
And that would be to amend both ordinances to only permit nonprofit entities to be operators of those particular markets. I need to do some legal research on it, and they would come back individually as two separate ordinances.
And/or maybe sponsor, you know, so it could still be local roots, but it needs to be, the permit needs to be gotten by a nonprofit.
And if local roots is able to find a sponsor between now and the ordinance adoption?
The, I mean, that's what we're going for, right?
There's been a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Well, I'm sorry, I had discussion.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right. I, from my personal view is, it's obvious that this year, because of the points that Greg has made, well taken, that this year, we're going to have the roads, from my view, we're going to have a promenade, whatever they want to call it, flea market, farmer's market. And I think there is an issue about changing midstream. I already made my plea above and beyond the law for these groups to work together with respect to the current year. My view of Mike's thing is that because of the point that Greg has made, it's going to take more time. And my view is, we should definitely do it, but do it with respect to the next year. That's all.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Thank you.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Well, I guess it's no if it's, are you suggesting, Mike, what, that it's?
Is yes, yes, and no. Yes is asking what you.
No, no, no. It's, I mean, I have this time element. I don't know that we can do it in two weeks.
Well, and that's, the previous vote was whether, did we, well, I mean, we just didn't approve it. We didn't actually say no. So if it's going to, if we can get it done within the time, well, I guess you're saying we can't get it done within the time limit.
For farmers, outdoor flea market, I think you can, although you're tight on time.
Well, for fairness, I'd rather keep them the same.
Okay, well, then I can't do the land use one.
Okay, so we're talking about the next.
Right.
Well, and how do the permits even run? I mean, do they have specific season, day-to-day, or?
It would be, the local roots is applying from October 1, 2016 to April 29, 2017. And shop local productions is October 2 to April 30.
But I mean, are we talking about, you know, annual years, fiscal years, seasonal years?
Annual season.
It's seasonal, but.
Annual seasonal?
I want to point out that the outdoor flea market, unless council takes other action, will expire, I believe, October 1, 2020, which sounds far away, but it's really not.
Far away.
Three seasons.
I think Mike Saxon, is there a time limit for it? They can apply, they can do it for November 1 through June 1. There is no timeframe. It's just whatever the applicant wants, correct?
Yes.
Doesn't have to be October 1, per se.
No, they've chosen. They like to start right in the beginning of season.
When they ask for a permit, are they limited to within a 12-month period?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'd amend the motion to, to apply to the next time around. And, but I would like to see them, you know, work together as best as possible this time around. And, you know, maybe even come up with the groundwork for doing the sponsorship and things like that.
Okay, the motion. So I guess we need to vote on the original motion. Is that correct, Audrey?
We didn't vote on it.
Yeah, okay, so we can amend it.
Well, I'll second his amendment.
Amendment, okay.
You vote on it first.
An amended motion and a second? Any further discussion? Amy?
I'm sorry. I just, I am totally confused of what we're doing. This, we're not voting on an amendment to the ordinance. We're voting on at least having a green sheet put before us that describes what we're doing in the future. Because we don't have an amendment before us, and we don't have a drafted ordinance, do we? No, of course not. What are we saying? We're giving direction to Audrey to draft something, and then it's going to come back and we're going to talk about it again? Before I draft something, I really want to do some research on, because when you talk about limiting to a nonprofit operator or sponsor, I don't know whether that survives the commerce clause.
Audrey, make a suggestion. That's the legal research. Can we do it once we decide whether we want to investigate it? Obviously, if it's not legal, we won't do it. Thank you.
And I don't want to prepare an ordinance until I know that it's legal. So my question is, are we, we're voting to investigate this. That's all we're doing. Is that true or not true?
Direction to staff to proceed with this if possible.
If it's legal.
I don't fully understand what we're suggesting we're doing because I don't, this was the first time I heard about it. But I am not against investigating something and taking a clearer look when the, when the difference is, are clear to all of us.
Fred, did you have something else?
Well, no, I was going to take a whack at trying to, what I believe we're doing is approving that Audrey would, A, do the research, and B, if it's okay legally, that she would prepare these new proposed ordinances to make it a requirement that any of these type of markets would be operated by or in the name of a non-for-profit, but that a non-for-profit could sponsor a profit-making entity to run it for them. I believe that's right.
And then the final part of that, as I understand it, is that it would apply not for this season, but for next season.
For next.
Would not compromise current applications.
Okay, everybody? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
No.
Councilwoman Slakto?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay. We have taken care of B. All right, and we, thanks for pulling that, Steve. Thank you very much. And, okay, we're going to move right along to C. And I actually forget who pulled that. Was it you, Pete? Or Mike? I'm sorry, Mike.
I pulled it to be, you know, I thought it was only fair to, if you're pulling B, to pull C also. So, motion to approve C.
Okay. So we're in a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Quick, quick point.
Yes, Fred.
Even though this doesn't relate, it does relate, when and if we get back to approving the local root application, I'm requesting Audrey to help develop some kind of a regulatory clause where they can't regulate them, any merchants that's in their place on other days of the week that wants to operate legally within the city. Because that has been a problem, I believe. And if it's not a problem, it doesn't hurt anything to put it in there.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
And I may need to ask you additional questions as to your point.
Okay, okay. Motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, I do. You know, you know, I would. I'm going to say this with all due respect to everybody. So theoretically, we needed to deny this one also. Because if we just deny local roots based on either the Lions Club did and didn't or whatever, I mean, it would just stand to reason that, and I apologize to them. I don't know if that's their unintended consequences.
I agree with that. It's a funny situation. I think in two weeks, we're going to approve local roots. We're going to approve, what you want to call it, the roads one.
You didn't continue it. You denied it.
That's my view. But I think you're right about being on the same track today.
The optics of it.
Right.
But we disapproved it.
Yes.
We disapproved the local roots.
But they have to reapply.
Right, but normally, if they've been denied, you can't really, I mean, you're saying for them to reapply and to.
Oh, please.
Well, I guess there should have been a motion to bring it back.
Yeah, you got to help us out, Audrey.
Okay.
All right. There's no sense up here that any, I haven't heard anyone say they don't think local roots should eventually have the permit this year. So help us out. All right. What we, what we want is an opportunity for them to sit down, and I won't repeat my whole point. I made the point. And that opportunity is above and beyond their legal obligation. So it's totally up to them what to do. And the notion is to come back in two weeks and see what we have. And if they've done nothing, and they have their legal rights, I would go ahead and approve it, and I would go ahead and approve the other one as well.
So you would like staff to just meet with them one more time?
I don't know if staff has to do anything.
To see if they will do anything.
I don't know if staff has to do anything.
Let me see if I can frame that. So the motion to deny was a denial without prejudice, so they may come back to you again with further clarification that should they come back to you again, it is recommended that they show a local sponsor of a nonprofit entity to show that they are working diligently in the commute, in our particular community.
I don't think that recommendation has to be in any motion.
The original motion just didn't pass, but somebody should have made an emotion to come, bring it back in two weeks.
But the denial, it's not like zoning, well, actually, it is zoning, because it's a farmer's market, so, treat the denial as a denial without prejudice.
Why don't you just help us out?
I'm trying to.
Thank you. In other words, in other words, the goal here, and you can put it in legal terms, is for, at least from my perspective, is for local routes and the other to come back in two weeks, at which time, they will be approved. Just my personal opinion, all right? And otherwise, we've made a request that they, out of the goodness of their heart, talk to the Lions about working together. There's no pressure to do it. But that's the context, so whatever we need to be doing to get there is what I would suggest.
So, it's a motion, the motion was to approve, was denied, but it was denied without prejudice, meaning they can go, come back again, and should they follow the dicta provided by you, we don't need to have another vote on this. Council will consider their application in accordance with our procedures.
Whether they follow it or not, we're going to consider it.
So, then, I'll withdraw my motion of approving C, and change the motion to having B and C both come back at the next meeting.
Okay, Fred, go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, I think to be consistent, we should also encourage the applicant for the Benita Beach Road site, which is not for a farmer's market, but I think it's a, what was it, a?
Flea market.
Flea market, yeah. That they should try and work with Lions, too, to see if there's any possible way they could get together to, as Peter O'Flynn has said, to make two and two equal six.
Or any nonprofit.
Yeah, or any, well, any nonprofit. Well, I will say, it was the Lions Club that was operating all this stuff before, and by the good foresight of the government, they put them out of business. So, that was, that's called government, I'm helping you here, I'm here to help you.
Okay, okay, Mike, so you've...
Changed the motion to pushing B and C back to the next meeting.
Okay, there's been a second, there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Great, thank you, and we also pulled E. Did I forget who pulled that at this point?
That would be me. I just wanted to give kudos to the rendering that they're doing for the outdoor kitchen building with the grant, because it wasn't, you know, a year ago, I was kind of asking that we sunset the whole grant program, because it was turning into more just paying 80% of somebody to paint their own building. But I like the direction that it's going in now, and, you know, I wish everybody would take advantage of this and actually make big changes to the buildings, and, you know, not just slap some new paint on them. So, motion approved.
Okay, it's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, F, Peter O'Flynn.
Maybe Ann can briefly tell us, it's described in the green sheet, but, hi, Ann.
Ann Wright, Finance Director. The green sheet relating to combining our two capital projects funds, we have two separate funds, so we present them separately within our budget document, we present them differently or separately within our annual financial report. There's really no reason to have those two separate funds, we, our current system can account for the projects on an individual basis, and can also group projects and give us subtotals, if we still want to see a subtotal that says roads, we can still produce that within one fund, and it's more of an efficient way of handling the capital projects. And I did research history on it, and there was no compelling reason to keep them separate.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Okay. G, take a sip of water, Fred. G. Peter.
Yeah, Ann, you want to quickly talk about this?
Certainly. This came about as a result of staff working on the budget process that is going to be presented four weeks from today, the city manager's proposed budget will be presented, and as we looked at the capital projects, we recognized the priorities that council has identified, and when the requests came in, a number of the projects that were on hold were being pushed back to later years, and I believe that was the guidance that council gave, is that we're, you weren't saying no to the projects, but you were saying, maybe not now, because we have other priorities. You also identified priorities, as I understood them to be, the Benita Beach Road intersection, and we knew that that was also a project that was going to take some time, but also a priority is, of course, the downtown project, well underway, and in a mode to have that complete by the end of fiscal year 2017. So, we have funding that's been allocated to projects that is not currently needed for those projects within the Capital Projects Fund. So, we do know that we allocated within our capital improvement plan, funding that needs to still be provided to the downtown project. So, this budget amendment is to move those dollars that were put on hold to go ahead and fund this project in the current fiscal year, so that when you open up the request for FY17, you will not see the downtown project, because it will be fully funded within fiscal year 2016 with approval of this.
So, this is kind of a technical detail, in terms of this, it's balance sheet geography, if you want. But the reason I pulled this is because of the green sheet that we didn't get to this morning, that we're waiting to do, with respect to finances downtown. I think we need a clear line of sight, everyone thinks, and I'm among them, that the downtown project is a fantastic project. I don't think we have enough clarity as to the kind of sponge effect that that project has on all the other funds in the city's budget, and the constraints it's put us under. So, when I read the green sheet earlier today, it talked about, and you've alluded to it here, how the money we saved in the process we went through, excuse me, in the last two months can now be used for downtown, all right? Obviously, we're going to get downtown done, but that wasn't the purpose of that whole process. That whole purpose was to free up money for other important priorities like Beach Road. So, the notion that we're now asking for money to come out of that process and to fund downtown is a symptom of the fact that, just a fact, this is not good or bad, it's a fact, that the downtown project has tremendous cash flow requirements on this town, over and above the debt that we've received, and we've paid back a bunch of it already, and way over and above the money we're getting from Lee County, that's all. So, these are points I would have made in the workshop, because, Ann, your green sheet, this comes out of the workshop. I'm okay with doing this, but we still need, and we're going to give you an opportunity to do it at some point, you prepared it twice, a clean line of sight on downtown cash flow constraints. I'd make one last point about it, I'm sorry to take the time on it.
No, 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 I think it's a great point.
Which, which is, if you read the reporting in the Naples paper on Baker Park in Naples over the last week, they talk about how important Baker Park is, but they also talk about, gee, this is really putting tremendous pressure on our general fund and our other funds, all right? And the mayor of Naples was quoted in the Naples paper as saying, that project is the biggest thing ever to put pressure on their general fund and other fund reserves. That project dwarfs in comparison to the old 41 project. So, I'm just keen for people to understand that, it's a reality, and I think two things have gotten mixed up in this town. One is, are you for the downtown project? Yes, we are, but it doesn't mean that when you're fiscally prudent with respect to it, it doesn't mean you're not for it, but we have to have a clear line of sight on it. So, that's all, sorry for it, but I just wanted to air that out.
No, I think that's great.
I would propose going forward with this, because I know you're going to give us a clear line of sight on the cash flow requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Look, because it's my understanding, this will just make it easier to see everything in the next budget, because instead of having old 41, the downtown project in the next budget, we're going to prepay it with everything we saved here, and now we have that money available in the next budget to allocate how we want to, with regards...
What money would that be?
Well, the money that we would have been obligated in the 2017 budget for downtown is now going to be freed up, so that money, we can put on to the quadrant study and, you know, resolving that issue.
That's what the cash flow analysis got to tell us, how much do we do have? I don't think it's a lot for other stuff.
Fred, go ahead.
Simple question, would it, even though we're more than likely going to approve this, would it make any sense to move it, defer it till after we have the discussion a little later?
I would just approve it, I wanted to air this out, and I thank Ann for that. At some point, Ann's finally going to get to present what she prepared for the last meeting, and what she prepared for this morning, and we'll, at that point, understand it. So, I would, I would move to approve.
Okay, it's been a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion and a second, further discussion? Amy, or Greg, I'm sorry.
I'm all set.
You're all set? Greg?
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions, I mean, if we're going to move this and then put it part of the downtown redevelopment, so, all these things on here are now off the table, they're not carried forward, they're not being rebudgeted, so, and I'll throw it out there, either the stormwater plan, $400,000, it's gone off the table, we're not rebudgeting it for next, well, if we're moving it forward, and we're using it for downtown, then we're going to have to find that money in next year's budget, kind of going from what Mike's saying, and all these things on here that were important to the last council, three of the, three of the seven are on here, aren't, we're saying they're not important?
Now?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Fred, go ahead, and then Peter.
I think, what I believe Councilman O'Flynn has said, that when we get to next year, and we really get into what's happened, and it's no one's, it's just a system, and it's the old thing, that construction rarely gets less expensive, there were surprises, you, the former city council approved, even though I know I didn't want to see it happen, I know the mayor didn't, he voted not to proceed, but they proceeded when they were already over budget, and that just kind of compounded a little more, so, it's too late to do the cutback, so.
Thank you, Fred. Peter?
Just one comment about Greg's point, so, there's an, you know, we operate basically, I mean, municipal government has its own set of finances, but in essential, essentially, it's, it's, it's cash-based going forward, all right? But this concept, as you imply, is accrual, right? So, you're basically accruing for this and taking it forward. I would hope the answer to your question is, in spite of that, when next year comes, and next year starts next week, right? In terms of the budget, in terms of the budget, that the answer is not that we're nixing all these other things. I think what you see here, though, is the scouring effect of the cash flow requirements over and above the debt, over and above the Lee County contribution on the downtown project. I don't think we have any choice, this stuff is baked in, and it's somewhere about eight to 10, my, somewhere between eight and $10 million in cash next year, over and above what we're getting from Lee County, over and above what we're getting from the debt, net of what we've repaid on the debt, has got to be dedicated in cash to downtown, and I think that's what you're seeing here.
I understand that, I guess, I guess, when we started this project in March and April, it was presented to all of us that this wasn't a movement, it was just, we're going to stall it and look for everything else, and now it's being erased, unless we rebudget it.
Hope that's not the case.
No, the, well, the projects need to, we need to find the money in later years when we do the project, but the whole point of pushing the projects back was to have the money now.
Carl, go ahead, yes.
The fact that we've listed the projects and tied numbers to them is not an indication that staff is recommending that those projects go away, it's just that if we were to come up with a gross number, and say, transfer this amount of money out of all the work you've done over the last two months, the natural question should be, where's it coming from? Okay? So, all we did was tie specific projects and numbers to those, but that doesn't mean those projects go away, the council has full authority to refund or to fund again those projects, if you wish to.
Well, I guess that's my point, we're going to have to argue these points again next month.
Let me say this, in deference to Greg's point, I'd like to withdraw my nomination, I don't think it's going to hurt you, you don't need this done today.
I don't mind approving, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, I'm just putting it out there, all these funds that are there, all these projects, lack of better terms, we're going to have to re-argue those for approval or denial next month, during the budget process, because we've taken the money away from them now, and those projects aren't completed.
But I believe you were going to do that anyway.
Okay.
I, I mean, I really do believe there was going to be discussions and deliberations at the council level, whether this was being put in front of you or not. Yes.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
Greg? No, okay, okay.
And, well, and if we don't, if we don't do this, we freed up all this money this year, that if we don't use it on anything, it just goes into the reserves, right? Or the general fund?
It's carried forward.
But at this point...
Yeah, but we already took it away from, you know, we already put projects on hold, we basically took the money away.
Yeah, but any project that's not completed is carried forward money. Right. It just gets carried forward, and whether it's allocated, it's either undesignated funds or designated funds. Right. Correct?
That's correct, except...
Yes, but no, but possibly, and possibly...
It's $4.6 million, that's kind of out there, and we need to move forward with identifying projects that are going to move forward. And what staff has done, based on the understanding that we had from council, is looked at specific projects that were placed on hold, and have pushed them out to later years. And so, now, we're saying that project's going to be funded in that later year, when in fact, we have money that's currently set aside for that, for that project. So, my interpretation of that was that it would free up that money, and that it would make sense to go ahead and fund a project that's already underway, and, and about to be completed by the end of next fiscal year.
Fred?
Well, one, one last point.
I know they're looking at that face.
Yeah.
He's getting, yeah, it's lunchtime.
Yes, it is, Tommy. I believe that the majority of us, when we did this, was, we did it to find money to go on what was called the Manhattan Project. And I think the reality is, that most of that money is going to go to pay off bills for downtown. And I think because of that, conceptually, yes, any of these projects that we diverted the money away from might get funded next year, but it's, my bet is, it's highly unlikely, because we got other things we've still got to do besides pay for downtown, so that's it.
Okay. Great, so, we, moving forward with the motion, right? And there was a second from Councilmember Gibson, further discussion? Anybody? Bueller? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
We're never getting out of here.
Okay. Item eight. Mayor and councilmember items. A is to approve a budget resolution to fund beach access beautification along Hickory Boulevard. Councilman Slakta?
Yep. I don't think I could have said it any better than Rhea and Pat McCourt said this morning. But, just, just so that you know, these organizations do use their dues. They use their own money to, to make our city a better-looking place. So, you know, I was called to the board meeting, and they asked, is there any possibility the city would be able to help us, because it's going to be a large project? So, I'm bringing it forth.
Okay. Great. Further discussion? Okay. So, do we have a motion? Steve, you're making a motion, I assume?
I'm making a motion to approve.
And there's a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay. Item B. Discussion on the merits of the Benita Beach Road Visioning Study. Councilman Forbes?
First of all, I want to make sure that everyone that's here, from staff to the, one of the survivors, two from the last council, or three, I'm not-
Survivors, huh?
Survivors.
Survivors.
Yeah, that's what it, some of them to be term limited out in the future. But anyway, I'm not being critical of what's out today.
There's only two.
Yeah, I'm pointing the finger at Steve. I want, but I'm, actually, I really, I thought I had written, discuss the pros and cons of the Tool Visioning Study. But I've, I believe that what we have, first of all, what Tool did for the money was great, but I believe that what we have is more or less a one-dimensional vision. And the one-dimensional vision is all focused upon helping resolve the Manhattan Project, get it into the end zone, do the quadrants, and so on. The, what I was hoping that we would get, and I want to contrast this a little bit to Old Forty-One to show you when I'm, where I'm coming from. Old Forty-One, I don't, they, at least they had a couple artist concepts. They're, they weren't the act, most accurate, and the buildings that we're going to approve down there or are being approved are a bit taller than the rendering, but it, it was something that stimulated the project moving forward, stimulated people considering making proposals to build down there. Secondly, they, they even had a, I believe, a color palette. I'm not advocating that we have a particular color palette, and I think in Benita Beach Road, because it's so long, rightfully so, as you go to the west of Old, of Forty-One, it, you become more and more beach-oriented, so you may have several different palettes, depending on where you are. But what we really have, we don't have the renderings, we don't, what I'm talking about, I would have envisioned that the team that we have would have come up with, like, sketches of particular areas along Benita Beach Corridor, showing what different possibilities could be done that would show those inviting outdoor shopping, dining facilities, just things like that. I, I think that the amount of money that we've allocated tentatively to carry this forward is insignificant to what we're trying to accomplish. And we, now, doesn't mean you have all kind of options, decision tree. I'm not advocating any. Whether we stay with Tool or whoever, we got to do this other stuff. We do this, the way we're heading is, like I said, more of a one-dimensional solution to at least a three-dimensional or a four-dimensional problem. And so I think we need to recognize that. Part of it is the fact that we were overwhelmed by the traffic situation that occurred in the last season, and, and rightfully so, we chose getting those quadrants going. I, I don't think we've done anything wrong. I think we just have lost some of the other part of what you would, a vision is a picture. It's not a map of a road. And that's where, but I'm not being critical of Tool, because I think they're great people, and they've done a great job. I believe there's been a lot of great citizen input. I'm certainly not being critical of Arlene. She's done a good job working with Tool. I just think we need to recognize what we need to get to where we're going. Now, part of the problem is we're, we're kind of moving, trying to go a little faster than Old Forty-One went. But we, we need to do these other things. So, end of comment.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, well, I know it was, the concept was presented to both Lee and Collier MPOs. I was wondering how that went, and, you know, if, if we're going to have any funding from them, you know, in a soon, earlier budget than, versus a later budget. I, I know a lot of things get, you know, thirty-five-year plans, twenty-five-year plans, fifteen-year plans, you know? How far out are we on the?
The, um, thank you for that question.
Camera, please zoom in on Carl Schwing.
Yeah, hi. We have not fully vetted this with Lee and Collier at this point. Collier knows about the proposal for Benita Beach Road only from what they've seen from the presentation, because they were in the room when the presentation took place. They do have some concerns about another recommendation, which has been made with regards to Old Forty-One south of Benita Beach Road, heading into Collier. Lee County has not formally objected in any particular way or responded officially. We did have Matt make a presentation in front of one of the MPO committees, and Matt is here to give you an update on how that meeting went. But at this point in time, we are simply in the process of trying to unwrap or unpack, if you will, the proposals to both the counties. They are both aware, I'm sure, that we would love to have funding partners in this, but we've not really even gotten to that subject yet, because we're trying to, to do this in a way that people feel that there's an opportunity for real input and response to what's been proposed. And we will continue to move forward with that. It's kind of where we're at right now. And, and I can just tell you that based upon other experiences in dealing with other entities, especially with regards funding, it's going to take some time to get anyone to that decision.
Okay. Matt, would you, if council doesn't mind, Matt, would you like to come up and talk about the MPO committee that was there?
Matt Feeny, for the record, Public Works Director. I did present, as Carl mentioned, to the Technical Advisory Committee of the Lee County MPO a brief kind of overview utilizing Tools slideshow of the Benita Beach Road Visioning, and kind of expressed, as Carl had explained, that, you know, it's, it's a vision that's still in a developmental stage, explained that council has not seen the final report nor accepted it, but, you know, went through the key components of establishing a vision, primarily focusing on grid network expansion, as well as the two, two-way bike facilities on the southern portion of the road is the key components. I, in addition, attended a meeting with Ian from Lockwood of Tool Design, as well as John De Palma from McManon Associates, because these, these two things are synergistic in nature, and Arlene Hunter to the Lee County MPO's Traffic Management and Operations Committee, which was a little more of a, a technical group. We gave the same presentation. So we're essentially on the stump, getting the word out about the vision and what those components would be. There's another meeting scheduled June twenty-eighth with the Lee County MPO's Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to do the same, to, to start to get folks understanding what is outlined in the Benita Beach Road Visioning, as well as what the city is, is doing in terms of the quadrant plan analysis. So, so both of those are kind of tandem, so we're working, working them together. I have talked to folks at Collier County regarding some of the implications, particularly with regards to a proposed PDNE study along Old Forty-One from the Benita Beach Road south to the Collier County line. And actually, there's a tandem study from the Collier County line coming north. So we, we've talked about those implications and, and seen if we can get some of the, the visions, concepts, at least in Benita Springs, incorporated into that planning documents guidelines as it moves forward. So, we haven't talked, you know, dollars and cents yet with, with folks. We've, but we're trying to get the word out so that they understand those discussions are certainly forthcoming. And I think, oh, one other thing, we are meeting with Lee County DOT, or we're, we're trying to establish a meeting with them, really because they're our chief partner, first partner with the quadrant study on the coattails of the, the meeting that we have with the bicycle committee. So we're trying to do that June twenty-eighth. Then the plan is to then reach out to our partners in Collier, and then our partners at the MPO staff level, vice versa. So we're, we're, we're working those inroads and, and getting the message out there.
Counsel?
Carl, are you happy with the pace? Is there anything council should be doing?
I don't think right now. We, we certainly, as I've already told council before, is that we, we certainly are going to need political leadership on certain topics. This is going to be one of them at the right time. I think at this point in time, we are simply trying to get the different entities' staffs to at least understand the proposal. This is obviously some different thinking from what this particular region is used to. So it's going to take some time to really unpack the ideas that are different than thoughts of, we move traffic. That's what we do. We move traffic. And we are still proposing, obviously, under these proposals to, to move traffic, but to do it in a different way, and we hope more efficiently as well. So it, it's going to be a paradigm shift in some thinking, and we're working with the staffs of the various entities to get them to understand first, if that makes sense to council.
It does. Makes sense to me. Everybody else?
Do you think it'd be worthwhile for the council at some point soon to just, in an overview way, focus on what we think might be the priorities along that route? I think we know the first one is the quadrant, but I think there are other things that I, I mean, I, I think I would be ready to rank some of that at some point. I'm, I think the interchange at seventy-five is a priority, and I think the beach is a priority. Those would be my three priorities. So if Fred is interested in a broader vision, you might be able to just focus on various sectors rather than the whole long length of it.
Mm-hmm.
And we could ask a wider vision in these, if, if others agree on that.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Fred? Set? Okay?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you, Amy. That's a very good point. Anything further here, Fred?
Oh.
Okay. And no action required?
No, I think you need to be realizing, when we go into that budget workshop, that whatever amount is shown to do for Tool is inadequate to do the things that we need to do. That was the whole purpose.
Right. Sure. Sure. Great, Fred. Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for that discussion. Moving on to item C. Request from staff, our staff to develop a set of criteria to consider future purchases of land in the DRGR pursuant to the Citizens Water Task Force recommendations. Councilman Forbes?
Right. Actually, we have at least one, maybe two proposals that, where people are what, what we called a willing seller, because that was part of the task force recommendation, no eminent domain. And it was pointed out by Carl that we did not have any established criteria. I jotted down criteria that could be used. Let me, let me say one thing. I think we have to be real careful with this, because with good intentions, you may just eliminate the possibility of a parcel that comes up for sale, because depending on the waiting system and all that. I think all the things I've listed are important. Generally speaking, if I had a choice between buying twenty acres of farmland versus twenty acres of existing marsh, I would go for the marsh, because it, it does a purpose now. It's risky that it might get converted to be a farm. The farm will take money to restore it back to being something productive for water. These, these are points I came up with. I think the first thing that happens is, city council should make inputs to this, to Carl, and I, and I, and also take a whack if there's going to be any waiting. But I think, I think we should be allowed to exercise our own intuitive thought process when a proposal comes in. We can kind of look at these points and see how it stacks up, but I think it needs to be not boxed in by real tight criteria. Otherwise, you're going to exclude something that you really want to get, but it doesn't stack up, and you'll also be forced to buy in something you don't want, because it stacks up real good by the criteria. End of comment.
Okay. Counsel? Thank you, Fred. Counsel?
I think it's a great idea. I just have two comments. I mean, the way I read this is willing sellers, and I think, one is, if someone's willing to sell, we bring it in, and if we've got the funding, and I think the biggest key to this whole thing is the funding mechanism. Where are we going to get the funds? Especially if we don't, if we do not, for budget, for it. Budget ahead of time. So like today, if somebody walked in today and said, hey, I got a hundred acres of DRGR, give me two hundred thousand dollars, are we going to be able to come up with that kind of cash at that time? And I think we look at each one of them at the merits, kind of like Councilman Forbes says. You've got to look at the merits. Is it, is it something we want? Is it in the middle of the DRGR where no one's going to get to it anyway? So why do we want to buy a plot of land right in the middle of the DR? To preserve it when everything else can get around it?
Shrek swamp.
Exactly. So I, I think it has merit. I think it's, I don't think it's anything that we're going to settle today, but I think it's something that we need to budget down the road.
Well, let, let me burst a bubble. There's a proposal that's going to come in that we're going to deal with. So I would suggest that between now and the next council meeting, that you look at this criteria, tweak it through Carl, so that we can deal with a proposal. I will, and I, Greg and I violently agree. How's that? But I would say that one thing that is really important, if you have a willing seller that's willing to finance, in other words, let's say hypothetically, somebody wanted to sell something for two-ten, but they're willing to finance it for five or six or seven years, that's, that really doesn't put the real big demand on cash, you know, thirty grand or forty grand a year.
No, I, yeah. No, I agree. I think that's, I think that's what we look at. You look at each parcel that comes in.
That's what I said. Yep. I agree with you. Hundred percent.
There may be some-
Audrey?
There may be some Florida constitutional problems with having a financing scheme set up for owning government land and having-
Schemes. Yeah, schemes.
Finance arrangements.
No, I like that. That's all right, Audrey. We're all wordsmiths around here.
We all get it.
Mortgage.
That's how we get in trouble with the words, it's called schemes.
Carl?
Fred will do that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I don't mean to-
The point of my discussion with Councilmember Forbes was that we need to have some objective criteria for council to look at. Absolutely, you can always kind of go outside here and there, depending on the individual proposal and, and what the council thinks about that. My concern is, does a proposal to buy a piece of property? Okay? Because, because once you start buying property, the line could, could run outside the door, okay? There could be a lot of people who are willing sellers, sellers, and want the city to buy their property. Funding is certainly an issue, absolutely. But is the property that you're looking to buy, is it actually going to advance or provide a benefit to the city for you to accomplish the objectives of furthering water conservation in the DRGR? That should be, I think, a, a big criterion. So, and then, how do you say no to somebody when they come in? You've said yes to the first three, and the fourth one, you're going to say no. Just, we thought the criteria might give you a basis to do those kinds of things, should you need to do it. That's all.
Absolutely. I think that's fantastic. That's great. Great. Counsel? Anything further?
Basically, he's giving you direction?
Yeah, Audrey, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just have one other legal point, and this deals with life estates. The city has done life estates, for example, Island Park, we did one with the seller, so that we were able to let him live out his life on the property. He was ninety-four years old, so we felt that that was a fair risk assessment to allow a life estate. If somebody is younger, I will tell you, the fire district was in the situation where they had to, it is a real estate possessory interest, a life estate. It's, it's a legal issue, and the fire district was in a situation where they needed to use the property, and they ended up using actuarial tables to buy out the person's life estate. So it is compensable and should be part of the purchase price. Making that very clear to you guys, that it's a separate and distinct. So if somebody has a life estate, you need to pay them, and that should be consideration for whatever the final sale is on the price.
Okay. Audrey, thanks. Carl?
Just one last thing real quick. Just timing. We had proposed on the green sheet that we be back to you in a month with this.
Okay. Great.
We're hoping to do that, but again, we've got budget in between, so.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. Steve, did you?
No, no.
Okay. Fred? You're good?
Good.
Okay. Fantastic. Fantastic. Okay, now, we're going to move on to nine, public.
Yeah, public.
Public comment. Anybody, yeah, and this does not have to be an agenda item, anything at all.
Well, mine, this is just a question.
Hello, Barbara?
Hi, I'm Barbara Craig, for the record. This is just a question that goes back to the conversation you were having about flea markets and farmer markets, farmers' markets, and I have no dogs in this flight, but I left utterly confused about something, so when you were talking about clarity, I thought this might be something you might want to think about. And that was when you made the suggestion that you have a nonprofit sponsor one of these entities, flea markets or farmer markets. It's not clear to me what exactly that means. The only thing I can come up with is it means that the for-profit entity would be, by this process, forced to either pay a fee to the nonprofit or to share the profits with it. And I think, unless you have a different definition of that, that ought to be made clear in your conversation, and that's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Hello?
Hello, Jean Bear with Local Roots. I'm just a little confused as well, and I know it's not a question and answer period, so I'll go to Laura with my questions, but I do want to remind, a couple of things we didn't talk about is that for three seasons, the Promenade was closed, and the Lions Club had their farmer's market in another location, and we're not able to regain traction for that farmer's market. We weren't even in the equation, and it wasn't successful for them. I think the Promenade was the great location. But RLR does not have the intention to have a flea market like the Lions Club offers. They do antiques, used books, baseball caps, sunglasses, all good and well, I love flea markets, but that's not what the Promenade wants, and so we can't bring the Lions Club into the Promenade to run a flea market. The owners of that facility, they don't want that. Saturday is the day that we choose, because we need overflow parking, because it's such a successful event. We use the church parking lot and the bank. And so for us to move to another day, which we've looked at, we can't, because it can't accommodate the event. We haven't talked about maybe the Lions Club looking to move to a different day, maybe that would, would help problems, because I know they feel that some of the vendors that come with us are unable to come with them, so possibly that's something they would entertain. We came to you today and said we would work with non-for-profits, and that's what we asked, and yet you turned us down. So I'm not sure what more to go back and do. We've offered the Lions Club a booth at the market, they said no. We offered to do a fundraising event with the Lions Club, they said no. I think the only thing they want is to come back and operate the farmer's market at the Promenade. The owner has said that's not what they want, or a flea market, they don't want that. So if I'm getting direction correctly, it is, we are to work with a non-for-profit, it doesn't sound like we'll be able to work with the Lions Club, and that if we come back to you in two weeks with maybe a different organization that is willing to work with a booth with us, that you will approve the farmer's market. Otherwise, I'm confused, and I'm not sure what direction to take to work with the Lions Club, because again, they have turned down any offers that we've made to get, to help them create a different fundraising venue. So any thoughts that you have, we would appreciate if you would get those to Laura, so that we can do it, but we do have at least 40 different non-for-profits we can approach, or if there's some here in Benita that you would like us to talk to, because again, we feel like we are at a crossroads with working with the Lions Club at this point. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Hello, Kathy, how are you?
Oh, good afternoon, for the record, Kathy McGrath. Before, I'd like to lighten up the atmosphere a little bit from what the serious thing you've been having. First of all, Steve, interesting what you brought up about aircraft and all, because after the 30 years of commercial flying, when we got our own airplane, I don't think that Comanche would have flown very well on water. We were very, very careful. And the other thing that people may not realize is, pre-flights, you have no idea, the critters that love to build nests and mud dobers, birds and all, and boy, what they can do, just snakes, just overnight. Anyway, that's the first thing. And secondly, John Jenkins, what can I say about him? Being involved with BSU for so many years, and John was, years ago, I've known him over 20 years, was part of legal counsel in Tallahassee. He knows every aspect, so he was perfect for the job. And now, July 4th, it's coming up real quick, the firefighters, 344. The theme is America the Beautiful, parade is at 9 o'clock, and our festivities start at 4:00, and we have the usual good stuff. The headliner this time is going to be Deb and the Dynamics, and the Ben Allen Band will be the opening act. We have all the good stuff, you know, all the kids areas, I'm not going to name it all, go on the city's website and see it. And we also have the bed race, the Y is sponsoring that, that's always fun. And we have our ice cream, watermelon, and hot dog eating contest, so just check that all out, because that's just great. The next thing, I want to talk about the Film Fest. I am one of the supporting cast, and there is, go on and check out the website, Film Festival, Benita Springs, excuse me, correction, benitaspringsfilmfestival.com. It has all the information on it, and it's going to be a great thing. Thanks. The theme this year is the beaches of Benita Springs, so get out there and get some pictures of our beautiful beaches. The next thing I'd like to bring up is, you've heard the organization, Music for Minors. I was reminded recently, they had a concert to raise money. They give instruments to kids that want to learn how to play and don't have the money for it. Their website is www.musicnumberfourminors.org. They are one of the recipients from the Blues Fest, one of the three nonprofits, the other two being our wonderful assistance office and the Galizano Children's Hospital. And I'm sure all of you might have family, friends, or neighbors that their kids were in the band, and they stuck the instrument somewhere in a closet or somewhere. Ask and check around, because they're a great, great, great organization. And finally, I just want to remind you again, oh, I forgot about the ice cream contest that Royal Scoop is having. Please go check it out, deadline is the 22nd, and whoever wins gets free ice cream for a year. And finally, it was all brought to light, blood donations after the recent tragedy in Orlando, and I have been a platelet donor for seven years. You can do it every two weeks. They take your blood, separate the platelets, and give you back your blood. It's replenished in three days, and not many people have the two hours that they can devote to do that, but if you can, at least donate blood. Thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else from the public at this time? Hello, Jane, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Cockle. I served on the Lee County School Board for 12 years, and four years ago, decided not to run, but I'm back in the race again for the at-large. I wanted to meet you, but I also wanted to observe a seven-member board as opposed to a five-member board, which currently exists. The school board is going to a seven-member board, and I'm very impressed with the opportunity that everybody has to state their case and to make their points, and especially the humor and respect that you have for each other. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Anybody else? Oh, hang on, Carolyn, let me, hello, Carolyn, how are you?
Hi, Carolyn Gallagher, Benita Springs, Cedar Creek. This is just a request. I noticed that in my packet, there were a couple of the briefings that I was interested in, BSU and the one from FGCU, that were here, I didn't, that I didn't have. Is it possible that they could post them on the city website?
You don't have them, how do you post?
How do I get copies?
The city normally doesn't get presentation items before the agenda, so it would be difficult to add it to the agenda. It might be something that they do provide, it's not that the clerk can provide afterwards.
Yes, we can give you copies afterwards.
Good, because those are the two I was most interested in. And the other, other thing, the little discussion they had on contacting FGCU, you know, the public, they don't want a lot of calls and disruptions, but I was just wondering, if it ever comes down to having to put a cap on that, could you at least allow the LPA members to talk to her? The idea was city council members only, and city staff, but I think the LPA members have an interest to.
Great.
Thank you.
I was going to say, work with, work with the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, City Attorney's Report. Audrey?
Before I start my items, since council has been meeting since 8:00 AM, I want you all to stand up and move your legs for a few seconds.
Good idea.
Before I start, because I want you to pay attention to me.
That does feel good.
Okay, just for a second.
No.
And incidentally, when I was a prosecutor and I had a long voir dire, I did make counsel, I did make juries do this, so that they.
Yeah, no, that's good. Should we twist around?
And you can now sit down again, but, no, you can move if you want, but.
She didn't say Simon Says.
No, no, I don't do Simon Says.
Thank you, Audrey.
Or Simon Says, right?
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
Steve's out of here, Steve.
Steve and Fred are taking too much of a walk, but that's fine. The first thing I want to do is introduce a new member of my office, and that's law student Ariel Daniels. Ariel, if you'd please stand up. And Ariel is my second-year law student at Ava Maria. She's working on a few items right now, including with Neighborhood Services, the rental ordinance, which I'll come back to you soon, there were some complications, so we didn't bring it today. And then also, she's been helping with some litigation support, dealing with the round about issues and, and some of the things that we're dealing with special counsel, so helping and doing some other projects. So if you'll welcome Ariel and talk to her.
Welcome, Ariel. Do you, Ariel, do you want to say a quick hello, or? You don't have to either, but welcome.
Just want to say hello, and it's a great opportunity to meet all you guys and to work with you. Thank you.
And have you been learning from Alex and myself?
Yes, I have been learning a lot of things.
That's the main thing.
Great, well, welcome, and thank you. Whatever you need, please let us know. Welcome to the team. Thank you, Ariel.
Okay, the next thing is to revisit the issue whether city council would like to have an ordinance regarding the affirmative vote of four or more council members for zoning or comprehensive plan amendments. You have a draft document, I worked with council member Corumba over the last two weeks, and we prepared a little draft of an ordinance that could be adopted if city council wanted to go forward. It was very limited. A great question came up from one council member earlier, I just want to share it, and that was, this only is if there's an increase in density or, or, I'm sorry, density, or if there's an increase in height, that you would need at least five. I want to point out that as far as decreasing density or height, we allowed the community development director to do that administratively, so we don't have the converse in anything that would be there. Now, I did have, I mentioned at the last meeting, Mary, one of the other law clerks, did provide me with a list of ordinances and the voting of council, and that's what's great about law clerks, because you can get some information that I would never be able to have time to spend. So in zoning, since the city's creation, we've had about 250 zoning cases, okay? Of the ones where council was a four vote, four, as opposed to a higher number, that occurred in 26 situations. However, so that's a 10 percent threshold, as far as having three nays, where it was a 4-3 vote because of nos, that only occurred four times of the 26, or four times in the 250 times. Generally, it was because of either absences, which, for pure absences, where it was a 4-3, because I only had four people that attended zoning that day, that occurred eight times, and the remaining is a mixture of absent and nay. It could be one, one person nay, two or two, one absence. So I wanted you to have that data. I've also done some research, just so you're familiar, the language in the zoning talked about, for example, communication towers, which that again is a height issue, because if somebody wants to place a tower, and it's not as, it's not just a stealth add-on to a building, you're obviously adding height, and there is some federal law preemption. That would be probably as difficult to try to say, no, you have to have a small tower that's non-functional. I also discovered DRIs is another area of law, where if you remember, when I did the green sheet previously, I talked about the Nevada case and Dillon's rule, and dealing where if there is a law, and it specifically says you're only to apply a majority, then you have to apply the majority. So we did find one in the DRI provisions in Florida statute, chapter 380. Otherwise, if council wants to have one of this, there are concerns. The legal concern being primarily another state statute, which is, I always need to prepare a resolution, why, why you denied a case, and I need to have the council tell me this is the basis for the denial, and what happens is, if I have a majority for the minority's denial, I need to go with that minority, the basis of what they're telling me, but you can see where that could be a problem. I don't know how courts will, you know, determine that issue, but that could be a problem out there, so.
Can you try that again? I don't follow you.
Okay, so the state statute, and it's a new state statute, requires that we provide a finding of why the case was denied. So applicants now know why they were denied. It used to be council could say denial, and applicants would just have to guess with the record or sue us. And because of that, if I now have a situation, I have a majority voting for, let's say I have the three absences, I have a majority for, or I have five people there, I have a majority for, one person wants to vote no, so I now have a denial situation, but I don't have a record that supports denial.
Well, okay.
Okay, just pointing it out, it could happen. You know, anytime you're going to do something, I want you to understand the consequences. It doesn't mean that this is illegal, so you can do this if you want to.
Supermajority?
No, I don't think. Supermajority?
Is that, explain that again. The four, and then the one, and it's a denial.
Okay, so again, let's say I have, I'll make a fake example, somebody comes in with a non-controversial zoning application, but at the time, council, here's the case, I have five people here. One person either needs to abstain because he has a voting conflict, or she has a voting conflict, whatever, or perceived voting conflict, and that's their prerogative, or alternative wants to vote no. I have a situation where the application cannot be approved at that point, and I don't have anybody on the record stating the basis for the denial.
Okay. Got it now.
Denied because we are stating in this ordinance that we want a five out of the set.
We need five.
Couldn't that happen with four?
Right.
Say there was four, you know, a quorum's four, there was four of us here, and one of us had to abstain, it'd be the same thing.
Yes, and what we have had done in the past, but sometimes I don't know it's going to happen until very close to the end. We've had situations where we only had four people left, we generally, and council member, or mayor Simmons, although council member at the time can remember, we've had cases where we needed to continue, I think you had to leave the room, so the applicant said, okay, wait, we'll continue it for the next month, because better, but sometimes applicants might not catch it, we might not know how somebody's going to vote, and we need to have additional people up there.
That would imply, if you had four people there, right, if three said yay?
Right, and, and everybody, here's my favorite budget story, and I think it was 2006, I had only four, I had one person in the minority, and because budgets have to be approved by September 30th, we, I had to start investigating, how do I get the motions before a judge to give us leave, to turn in, for the, I'm sorry, for the tax collector to, in the state, to accept our late resolutions, if we had to do late resolutions, I have that leave of court. So not a fun moment.
So Audrey, how are you dealing with these other exceptions, DRIs, et cetera, in here?
Right now, what I have drafted is language, it's on page two, which is, if it's notwithstanding the above, so I, what I did is, I modified an existing ordinance we have, and I just add, if it's a, any decision by council to consider a zoning application, whether it's planned development variance and special exceptions, that has the effect of increasing height or density for either a whole project or part of a project, will require affirmative vote of five or more council members unless prohibited by law for that particular use, and the burden of approving the zoning application falls under prohibition of law falls upon the applicant, which is how we also did it with communication towers, because sometimes it would apply, sometimes it would not apply, the Spectrum Act.
Yes, Fred.
Question, Audrey. In what you've written, assuming it passed. In what you've written, assuming it passed, what, what is the requirement to repeal or amend that ordinance to take it back to the way it is now?
It's in our land...
Is it four or will it be five?
I currently have it just four.
Well, then that, okay. Point made.
Right, we don't have anything else in the Land Development Code that would try to entrench future council members to follow this, and other council would be able to delete it at simple procedure. Now, the alternative, and what, when I provided you a survey of other communities, they had charter amendments that had specific language as to height and density. In fact, the only ones I have seen is where there is in a charter amendment. I haven't seen where it's a standalone. They might have implementing regulations, and in that case, you would need the voters to vote whether or not to ever change it.
We, we can't put in this thing you've written up that it would require a vote of five to repeal it or whatever?
I would have to research it a little further, but you, we could try. Again, I'd have to look, that you would be changing that one rule in the entire zoning ordinance, but it could be something possibly done.
Yep.
That, that would be councils...
My only point is if you had something that was so contentious that you couldn't muster five to pass it, those four that wanted it can, at the next meeting, make a motion to repeal the thing, and in 90 days or whatever time it takes to do it, you're back to where you were, so...
Except for the fact that we also have in the ordinance, for example, like I said, for a zoning ordinance, when city council denies an application, the applicant has to wait out one year unless city council affirmatively determines that their denial is without prejudice. They'd have a year to make the change.
Fred? And, and, okay, okay. Mike?
I'm quiet.
No? Okay. Anybody else? Okay?
I just had, I just had one thing to talk about, Audrey. Excuse me. Audrey, on page one, A5. Sorry. I wonder if we could flip this, because the way I read this, you're stating what the charter requirements are in the first sentence? And then you're saying notwithstanding the above. There's an implication in that, the way I read it, that somehow this is trumping the charter, which it can't. So what I'd like to do is take out the first sentence, and let me just read this through. Start in the second sentence, take out the words notwithstanding the above. So you start with the, excuse me, cold. Start with the word any, you with me? So then you read through the rest of it, any decision, blah, blah, blah. Now you get to the end, and now I'm saying, after the end, provided that this requirement shall be subject to and shall not contravene the provisions of the city charter, including but not limited to section 26 thereof.
I'm going to have to either borrow your writing of that, or...
That's fine, but my concept is, as long as, so if you read section 26, I think there's, at a minimum, at a minimum, there's some ambiguity in it. At a maximum, it's saying that four votes does it. All right? So in order to not be in a position of approving an ordinance that attempts to override the charter, I'm saying, just say, this is what we're doing, but providing it's subject to the charter. Whatever the charter... Whatever the charter says.
Okay, and let me make sure I understand direction here, and that is...
This is a suggestion, yeah.
Right, well, when council eventually gets the direction, let me make sure I understand. Section 26 of the charter doesn't, requires an affirmative vote of four or more.
Right.
And the way I've interpreted four or more is that the city could require five for special subject matters. I want to make sure that if we are talking, if we start with any decision to amend...
Right.
Council, this section deals with things other than density and height.
Right.
So do we want to have something just saying if it's any change that doesn't fall under that, it can be just four, or does council want five for everything?
No, no, I'm just dealing with, although you're interpreting it the way you're interpreting it, section 26, others could interpret it the other way.
I understand, and that's why I want clarity.
So all I'm trying to do is put the saving clause in, so we're not in a position where somebody can come in and say, understandably, wait a second, they're attempting to modify the charter. So whatever the charter, whether it's your right or somebody else's right, whatever the charter is, controls.
Right, but let me also understand, does council want just to have the super, what we're calling supermajority or more than the four as required by the charter?
Right.
For just density and height, or do they want it for all land use ordinances? Do we want, like what Ms. Crespo is working on, for example?
Well, that's up to what Amy had come, I don't know, whatever, she's...
Just density, I think it should be narrowly defined for those two items.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, and I'll add your savings clause.
Right.
What I'd like to do is also have language in there for, for the votes that are not height and density, but then just simple four is okay, that you still need four.
Well, I think you should work with Councilwoman Corumba.
I will.
No, I'm sorry, in other words, she's the one who has put this forward, and I'm assuming this meets her requirements, so...
Yes, we'll work further on it.
It's very straightforward. My only question is, you, you said the DRI law was different, so if this, if a new DRI proposal came before the council, then we could, and there was a height issue there, we still would only be allowed to vote on a four-three there? Is that what you're saying?
Whether it's, I'm saying beyond new DRI, I'm saying even an old DRI, you still need to vote based on a majority of the...
So any DRI, new or old?
So if, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So if there was an, I don't know what the word, if we were just trying to amend a DRI that had to do with height, it still would be four-three, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm, and that's state law?
State law, I can give you my copy here.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
And one last quick thing, not for further discussion here, I mean, subject to council. Just picking up on the concept that Councilman DeWitt raised earlier today, having to do with, we happen to be talking about the flea markets, kind of a midstream thing. I think it's important that, this is going to take some time to adopt. As we go forward, we have whatever council, you, whomever is involved in other currently pending things, puts an eye on it and considers it in the context of the point that Greg made earlier today.
Yes, now, we do have...
All I'm suggesting is you look at it, that's all.
Great, thank you, Peter. Audrey?
Well, again, when council, because, you know, working with Councilmember Corumba has been great, but I do want to make sure I understand council's direction on this. If there is a specific date or application usage, because again, this is procedural, so it's a little different, if you want to have an effective date for applications turned in after X date, that would probably be easier and more defensible, but you could still, because it's procedural in aspect.
Yeah, and I think that's the question we would want, you would want to consider with the outside council we're going to hire, to make sure we're not...
Right.
Okay.
We don't want to be in a position where we're said to be denying due process, because we're clearly not doing that.
Right, absolutely, well said. Council, anything else? Audrey on this? Okay?
I'm sorry, sometimes...
And I was going to say, and I think you're right, moving right along to C, right, Audrey, at this point?
A C, so I'm going to ask Mary to come up.
Moving right along, yeah. Hello?
Let me just introduce the issue. One of Mary's projects, and I mentioned it at the last council meeting, is to work on the, amending the false alarm ordinance because of changes in state statute. Mary will give a small presentation, and if council is satisfied, we can move forward to first and second hearings.
Okay, hello, Mary.
Hello, so just that, Mary Zizo, for the record, this is a request to amend the Manita Springs False Alarm Ordinance to conform with the state statute changes.
Can you talk louder, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, into the microphone, Mary. There you go, thank you.
Is that better? Thank you.
Fred has that problem, too, down on the end.
Sorry. If council chooses to go for it, the first reading will be July 6th, and the second reading will be July 20th. I worked with the Lee County Sheriff's Office on this, who enforces the false alarm penalties and registration, and a few of the changes that we discussed, we're getting rid of the contractor's registration fee as required in the statute for the false alarm system contractors. The contractors are now required to give notice to the alarm system operators for the registration requirement for an alarm permit label, and the ordinance was fixed to ensure that it's clear that these forms and fees are filed at the sheriff's office. And this statute goes into effect July 1st, 2016.
Okay.
So we're a little late, but not that late.
Mike?
Well, it says the fees are to be paid to Lee County Sheriff's Office, is that the, does that have to be done down on Sixth Mile, or can it be done at the Delta District here in town?
That's a great question. I believe it can be done locally, that's where they have multiple offices, but I will confirm that, so it's listed where...
Sergeant Jim?
And, and then it'll also...
We shouldn't make them drive all the way to Fort Myers, I would assume.
Said that monitoring companies are required to register annually with the sheriff. How do we make sure they all know that they have to register annually?
The monitoring companies?
Yes.
Actually, it is not the, well, it's the owners of the alarm system that need to do the registration. This allow, this requires that there's a one-time notice from those who register it, and then the owner is now responsible. And I believe that the sheriff's office does waive the, the registration cost of the owner, as long as they keep it current, and...
And the contractors and monitoring companies do have to register annually, however, they said that there are only a few companies, they're rather large, and they are pretty adamant about doing so each year. If they don't register, they're not able to, the operators are not able to get a permit in that name, so the contractor would get a fee for not registering, or a fine for not registering. However, we're not requiring a fee to register, just for public policy reasons.
So that's how they would find out that they need to do it, because otherwise, if you're, if you just started up a monitoring company, how would you know that Lee County requires you to do this? Just with the advancement in technologies, there's a lot of wireless ones now, and so you might not have a local monitoring company, or, you know, I know ADT's nationwide, but now that you're going wireless, there's going to be smaller monitoring companies sprouting up, and...
Right.
And how are they to know that they need to register?
And the position at the sheriff's office is, is if it, if the wireless alarm system will dispatch to the home, because the concern of this ordinance is false alarms, so if it will dispatch, there needs to be registration.
The registration focus is on the permit and the alarm itself. They're trying to take away the emphasis on the contractors and the monitoring companies, they're...
But on the wireless, it says no permit necessary.
For, right, for building permits. Now, we are making some adjustments to this ordinance, because it's a very complicated area, because it deals with the building permit, the building official, which you, of course, the wireless alarm, you don't need to worry about it, a hardwire situation or fires, fires to the structure. So there is building permit, who it just referred to as the, as the enforcement agency, and then there's the law enforcement agency, which is the false alarm aspect. So there is some adjustments that will be made to this particular ordinance before Mary brings it back for first reading, that we've been working with the sheriff's office on.
So wireless doesn't need a building permit, but wireless will still need the sheriff's permit?
Wireless will not need a permit, but we're working on figuring out if it will need registration, just for public policy reasons, so that they have the information if they are dispatched.
Okay.
And wanting to point out with you, this ordinance is relatively uniform with Cape Coral, with Fort Myers, and with Lee County, so we are moving ahead with the sheriff's office, because again, the particular session law that got passed had several different issues dealing with it. This was one of the ones with the contractor registration. It is also interesting to note, this was also Dane Eagle's ordinance, or legislation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council, if you will, would you please move to public hearings?
Move to, move to a second.
There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Audrey D.
Okay, before we start, if I may approach the dais to hand out some papers?
Please approach the bench, counselor.
She's approaching the dais.
And asking permission, I love it all. Are you? You don't need permission, come on up, Penny O'Leary.
And I provided a copy with the city clerk already, so the three papers I handed you, the first two deal with the retaining of the special counsel. One is a resume of David Theriak, the other is a resume of Susan Tray Varthan. They're both excellent attorneys. I think council that got to talk with them would both say they're both excellent. I don't know council's pleasure on how to proceed. They're both available, they both don't have conflicts, the amount is comparable, I'm sure I would enjoy working with both of them.
And I guess my only question, just master the obvious in my mind, but I was just going to say, there is no, I don't want to say no scenario, but we, we don't want to hire both of them, correct? In other words, we don't want each of them to shoulder half the load and hire two, would be my only question.
Right, that would be more confusing on me, so please don't...
Understood, okay, but I just felt, seeing how we're, we're dealing with a lot of talent here, just wanted to, okay.
If I might?
Yeah, absolutely, Pete, please.
First of all, Audrey, thank you for doing this, and I agree with you, they're both excellent attorneys, having met both of them. I'd like to suggest that we move forward with David Theriak. I just thought he's very accomplished, been around the block on this stuff, and would do a first-class job.
And I'll, I'll second that motion, and primarily because he had to deal with Arlene in his, at Florida State University.
You're not going to talk Yankee stuff, that...
No, I was going to say, he's a fellow New Englander, so I, you know...
The only thing, can you, it's the only issue, Audrey.
I actually, I think I was hitting my head on the wall while they were talking about different...
Yeah, she was trying to understand who Bill Buckner was.
Oh!
And by the way, he spoke very highly of you.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I just want to ask, is this who you would pick, Audrey?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you're the ones that got to work with him.
Great.
Yes, and I can give you some briefing later on.
That's great, okay, motion and a second? Further discussion? Mike?
Is there any issues with location? You know, she's in Fort Lauderdale, he's up in Tallahassee.
Well, he also has an Orlando firm that he can have some of his folks work there. One is another adjunct, former adjunct, Professor Terrell Arlene. The Skype, I think, worked out pretty well for those.
Yeah, I thought it did.
I thought it was very...
And I think he said he spends 70,000 miles a year on the road, or 40?
Forty, fifty thousand miles per year in the vehicle.
On the road, so...
I was like, whoa.
Right.
Yeah. Stop it. And, and I will say that the, right, so as far as him coming down, we probably can work through Skype, and that would be more cost efficient for most of the time. And where we need him for a face-to-face, we can bring him. Like hiring the FGCU, I would not expect citizens to ever call him or contact, I would still take the front end there, and I would still ask council to go through me, because we do want to keep, you know, nothing worse than an outside attorney being crazy.
Got that, Fred? All right, checking. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Even though it's FSU, I'll say aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Look at Arlene's smile. Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
I'll have to agree with Mike, aye.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
And I guess you can look at it, it's Florida, N-State, aye.
How's that?
Councilman Flynn?
Aye. Sneaky Pete you.
Stop it, okay.
We're getting giddy, we're getting giddy.
Next thing on this particular item is you have a copy of a zoning resolution to remand the request by Pelican Landing Golf Resort Ventures for further review. This reflects what happened during the February 3rd, but starts the clock, I wanted the clock to start after we were able to retain outside counsel, so bear with me on that. And this gives meaningful time for the outside counsel, for staff, and for the public to review the application.
Is there anything in this that David...
Great job, Audrey. Thank you very much.
I make a motion that we accept what she wants to do here. Do it.
Okay.
I didn't hear that.
Go ahead, Fred, say it again.
I just said I make a motion that we accept this.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve it. Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Thank you. I do have just a couple housekeeping things, and I promise to keep them very short. The next thing to let you know is Tigress Road, BSU, did give us their easements, Carol Bonham from BSU, and the city clerk has provided them to the property owner. So to the extent possible of getting Tigress Road, we'll try to get those easements approved. The final item, and it affects Carl, John Dolmer, David Ortiz, myself, and that is on July 5th and 6th, we will be in litigation for Carter Pritchett case. I may be late, maybe Carl, depending on testimony, for the workshop, so I just wanted to let you know ahead of time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Audrey. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Very thorough job. Good job. Nice work. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, presentation of the monthly financial reports, they've been submitted to you. We stand by for any questions you might have.
None.
All right. Second item is, and this happens this time every year, where CH 2M has the opportunity to update the pricing on the contract. The contract we have signed with them right now runs through September of '18. So this is just an annual adjustment they're requesting. John's standing by for questions, but basically, this contract is in two pieces. One is the soft... What I call the soft side of the department, which is your planning and your zoning, those kinds of things, where the planners are involved. The hard side of the department is more of your permitting, inspections, those kinds of things, that is paid for by building fees, okay? Not by the general fund. What you see in front of you is basically two pieces. Number one, a request to increase the contract by about $39,000, still during this contract year, for issues of basically market, responding to the market. There is so much demand out there right now for construction, building, and those kinds of things, and inspectors to inspect it, that it's being... It's extremely competitive at this point. I saw this during the mid-2000s in Cape Coral as well. Just trying to keep up with the market was difficult because you were trying to retain your employees. And then the second adjustment deals with both sides of the department, but minimally on the general fund side for the soft side, and more so on the building side. So staff is recommending approval of this. With this approval, of course, we'll make an adjustment this year, but also we'll know what to budget exactly for the coming year as the budget year is progressing. So I don't know, John, did you have additional comments you'd like to make?
Is this John's raise?
Mm-hmm.
Apples to apples? Is this John's raise? Or what are we looking at here, John?
Only if you specifically require that, Mr. Mayor. No, sir, Carl did a very good job outlining this. I really don't ever enjoy this hearing, but I get to do this every year for this request. Unfortunately, we are in a very competitive environment, and this is not a result of us trying to put a fence around the entire staff. This is basically identifying key employees that we need to keep to keep our level of service up and to keep our operations running. And that's what's being presented to you here today.
Because you've had some adjustments this past year with staff, right? Or at least one, right?
Yes, sir. Actually, we've had three.
Three?
The one that you've been identified, easily identified, is Jen Hagan.
Right.
And she decided to work for the University of Florida. We've also had...
Get that, Arlene? University of Florida, sorry.
We also had two building inspectors that changed to different private providers, and that's what's really started this request going. We, at the beginning of the contract year, had four inspectors that also had a building official license. Two of them took other employment, and two others were being courted by other companies. So for us to continue providing services, we have to make sure we at least have one. Two is better, so...
And when you say others are courting, does that come in writing, too? You know what I'm saying? Or how does that work? So, I mean, you know they're coming after them, and it's in writing?
I have heard it... I've heard of offers. I have also seen written offers.
Gotcha.
So I am able to verify the amounts that they're being offered.
Of course. Great, great. Counsel?
I'm very pleased with the community development and everything that you guys do, and help us out here on the council, and I will move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Carl?
Just for clarification, you are approving both increases, is that correct?
That's correct.
One for this fiscal year, and then for next year.
That's correct.
And that it's directly John's raise? Sorry.
He's got a new baby.
We can't do that.
He's got a new baby.
He's got a new baby, okay.
I'll pass that along, though, sir.
Sure, sure it's not a cut and pay?
Yeah, cut and pay, okay. Anyway, sorry for that. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great. Mayor and council... I'm sorry, Carl, anything else?
Arlene's got one more thing. It's a happy thing.
We are very pleased to announce that we will be installing our city clock the last week of June, and our hopes is to have the unveiling as part of the beginning of the Fourth of July parade. And we want to do a special thank you to both of our Rotary Clubs. It was a three-way cost share between the AM Club, the Noon Club, and the City. We also will have a bronze plaque commemorating this gift from the Rotary Clubs to the community as well.
Arlene, excuse me, Mayor. Arlene, just so I can let the Rotary Club know, what time are we going to do this? Our parade starts at nine, so...
Correct. We're going to be looking between 8:30 and 8:45, so there's enough time for anyone who is participating in the ceremony to get back in line to get through the parade. But we're confirming all that with the Fire District.
That would be nice if, Mayor, if most of the council people could be there. They're going to be there anyway, but if they could all be there, because that would really help out, you know?
Yes, absolutely. Great. Thanks. Anything else, Arlene? No? Okay. Moving on to mayor and council member items. Let's start with Councilwoman Carumba.
First of all, I just like to recognize our fellow city of Orlando and the ordeal that they have gone through, and I share in their sorrow, having lived through a similar thing in New York, and I'm very empathetic to what that city is doing. And to get back to Benita business, I want to talk about outreach. I'm sorry, but I have to talk about this every time. Just to let you know what's happening, we are generating an email list, and that's going pretty well. I met with two neighborhoods in my district, Citrus Park and San Carlos Park, and the areas of interest out of Citrus Park was, of course, the mine extension. We had a big discussion about that. They're very interested in the Benita Beach Road quadrants activity, and also in the redevelopment of downtown, and also the high school, which I thought was strange out of Citrus Park, but there was a lot of questions about that. I also met with San Carlos Park, and they're... The thing that we talked about was they're concerned about intrusions of cars from, I was kind of surprised about this, Imperial Boulevard onto two of their streets. I can't believe, but people come off of Imperial right onto their streets over a bank. So I'm working... I'm trying to set up a meeting with Matt and representatives to see... He's already sort of looked at it, so we're going to see what happens. I don't... I mean, I couldn't believe that it happened, but that's what they're concerned about. And they are very interested in being kept informed about community development projects, and they're concerned about any traffic study which would reroute, would give a new north-south entrance from Coconut Road down. And I think that was part of it, somebody suggested they do that, but that's what they're concerned about. I've had several meetings with community development, so I'm so glad that we voted that they get an increase, and I'm very pleased with that interaction. And I was shown a beta test of a new website, a new part of their website. I don't know how far this is really going to get to fruition, but what they're trying to do is to be able to go on the community development website and click on your neighborhood, like it would be Pelican Landing, or Benita Bay, or whatever. And then permits or significant permits or applications that were... Be pending for that neighborhood would come out easily, because I don't know if anyone has tried to use the website. It's not that user-friendly, so they're responding to what came out of our focus groups, that we wanted to have more transparency with community development, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that come to be a fruition. And they also, community... And I just want to tell you, one of the problems that we've had with outreach is that community development did send out a courtesy notices to Pelican Landing neighborhoods, and it was received. I was very appreciative that they did that because Pelican Landing was a neighborhood that was, I think, negatively impacted by a lack of information. Not that we did anything illegal. The legal notices were every... Were done very properly for Raptor Bay, but our neighborhood was upset about it. So we had a courtesy notice sent out to them, but the people couldn't understand. This is what happened. This is the consequence. They didn't understand what that notice was. So just getting the notice, it needed some explanation, so what I'm trying to do within that community to get some follow-up communication. So even though we're trying to do some really good things, but people who are not informed with the process get confused. And I think it's sort of what we've been going through a little bit today, that we're confused with the process. So when we do outreach, we have to be more clear, that's all. And that's my report.
Wonderful, wonderful. Great, great job, Amy. Thank you. Greg?
Well, the only thing I have, I probably will not make the Fourth of July because my daughter's in a competitive dance team that's meeting in Orlando.
Congratulations.
The first through the seventh, so...
Wow.
I'm trying to get out of it, but it's not looking good.
All right. Well, congratulations for that.
Don't get out of it.
Steve?
Yeah. Yesterday, we had Flag Day at 5:00 PM, and I know we're all pulled in different directions and, you know, but we had a lot of people there. And I want to thank Fred and the mayor for being there, and the mayor, you gave an excellent speech. I think you kind of set the tone for the rest of the evening, so thank you for that. And I want to thank you, Greg, for Engine 22. They're always responsible, and they're always there, and it creates a safe environment, obviously. Yesterday morning, I got an email from Dave Grossi, who was previous to Veterans Advisory Committee Chairperson, that his dad passed away. And here we go, there's a World War II veteran. He fought in the Battle of the Bulge, so we are losing them left and right. So David, our heart's out for you and your family.
Yes, yes, for sure, because he was at the ceremony just a couple weeks ago. Wow, okay. Pete?
Yeah, just quickly. I'm really privileged to be the liaison to Art and Public Places Board, and I wanted to talk about one thing and ask counsel about a second relating to it. You all know, this is a volunteer group that's been operating really cohesively for 10 years on a shoestring, and they've done fabulous work for the city. And Arlene is the staff liaison to them. One of the things that came up recently, you may be aware, is a mural, another mural relating to 9/11. And I was at the Fire District, saw it written there, on Monday, and just a big thank you to the district, particularly Steve Lohan and Joe Daigle, Chair Lohan and Chief Daigle. The Fire District has stepped up on this, and on their own, said that they will pay for that, when normally it would come out of the city budget. And what they're planning to do, it's going to be on the firehouse downtown, and thinking in terms of a park there as a memoriam to 9/11, and various aspects of it. But really, a big thank you to the Benita Springs Fire District. They weren't asked to do it, they stepped up, and they did it. So thank you on that. The second thing is, we had our meeting, and Steve is the reason I wasn't there, Art and Public Places Board, last night, and I asked the group if they would consider, this is a longer-term thing, thinking of some type of sculpture or something that would work on the US 41, the massive, concrete, ugly US 41 bridge over the Imperial River. Something in the median, something architecturally that would flow through the median. And I said, would they be up to a process of thinking about that? And they said they would. The obvious gating question is, first, would FDOT be okay? I got to believe we can cajole FDOT into doing something that's not too high. But the other obvious question was, would council be interested? This is just my own personal thing. Would council be interested in having them brainstorm with respect to it? So if you guys are okay, it's not like we're going to build this tomorrow.
Absolutely.
If you guys are all right, I'd like to go back to them with councils. Okay on that? All right. Thank you. And then, so the last thing, Carl, is where are we? Just help me out. On the budget, what's coming up next, and how you think it should relate to what we didn't get to do today on all 41, financial-wise? Just the timing of what's next?
Timing? Well, you have adopted a schedule, and I don't have it in front of me, but we are looking, first off, at the workshop on July 6th, which will be an hour and a half, is that Director Wright is going to be presenting to you more the revenue side of things, just so if council wants to talk about opportunities for changes, whatever, you can do that at that time. We are looking at a budget workshop, which could last all day long.
Right.
On, and this has been adopted, July 13th.
Right.
All right. So the week of, probably July 4th, we're looking at submitting the budget to council, and that'll be our presentation to you, and then the 13th will be the day-long presentation.
So what we missed out on today, we're going to get at the beginning of the next workshop, what she didn't get to present.
Oh, if that's what you want, yes.
I think we should. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
The finances for downtown.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a time on July 6th? Is it nine?
It's...
The workshop?
No, the workshop...
3 o'clock.
Yeah, it's 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
The workshop on the 6th is in front of the council's meeting.
Right, I'm sorry, on the 13th.
On the 13th, that time is...
Got to be 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock.
Okay, great.
And I'm sorry, one last thing, one last thing. I'm wondering if on the afternoon presentations, which start at 4 and have tended to go to 9 or even 10, if we can, consistent with city policies, just do presentations that are really necessary, and keep them time limited. And those presentations in the early part would be staff presentations relating to what we do, preferably as opposed to outside presentations. Carl, is that something that you think would make sense, or council?
Yes, sir, I think what we're finding, and today is a perfect example of it, is if you bring in a bunch of outside presentations, then it may, they may or may not be focused on what you're working on in terms of your priorities, but they take up a tremendous amount of time, of the council's time. So, I'm actually in agreement with the recommendation that perhaps we think about limiting those to what Councilmember O'Flynn indicated, meaning also that some of these regular folks that come back in and give us periodic reports, that at least for now, we put a hold on those, and that would include the EDC, that would include Rudy...
BSU.
BSU, those kinds of things, those regular ones would be set aside at least for a while, until we get more of a grip on getting information you need on your priorities.
I think that's great.
That's great.
Head nod, everybody?
Everybody.
Yeah, okay, great.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Amy, you like that, Peter?
I like it very much.
All right. This is Jack, all right, great, thanks Peter. Mike?
Good.
Mike, you're good? Nothing to say? All right.
Speechless.
Speechless. All right, Fred, you're up.
Before I go into my little thing here, one question...
Are you going to your presentation and dissertation? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to do a big dissertation. Are we saying that we're not going to hear the rest of the, what we started that was put into this meeting on the downtown?
No, no, no.
Okay, good, that's good. Okay. Number one, I want to encourage everybody to really celebrate what the Fourth of July stands for. You know, we have a habit of, like Memorial Day weekend, it's more of, a lot of people party more than think about what it's for, and same thing on the Fourth of July, we have a lot of things to be grateful for in this country, and a lot of things to be concerned about, and there are a lot of people that would like to do away with us, you know. The Tree, the Tree Committee, everyone that's on there, for the most part, are landscape architects, and I think we, we need to kind of reach out and maybe make a little bit better use of them than we've made historically. I know I didn't get to them till too late to make an impact or input on the, what you could do downtown, but they really, they did put some time and thought in that, and I think they're, I think that committee could, we can use them more than we have historically. The other thing I want to bring up, more than likely, in the next meeting or so, I'm going to propose that we really scrub down spatial exceptions and get a bunch of them over into not permitted, especially in the corridor, and then once you do that, you can look at other areas, but I think, I think that could be done, and I think, I know, at least partially, part of staff seem to be interested in doing it, so...
If I might...
Yes, Carl, please.
Tag on to that, that's part of Alexis Crespo's scope of work coming up?
Right.
Is to be looking at those uses.
We, I think we could maybe help if we could have like a little miniature discussion with Alexis here, to kind of give her some things that we already would think. I mean, say, if, if we can save her time, it saves us money indirectly. The other thing I want to, we gave a big thank you to the Mayor for his vision and getting a vision study, but we also want to thank Councilman Slakta, because I believe it was he that got the thing redone on the Benita Beach Road widening project, so I want to recognize him. And I want to echo his comments on the Flag Day celebration I went to yesterday, was very good, very moving, and so...
And hot.
Great part of, great part of the life of Benita Springs. A lot of things go on that people don't participate in, they're, they're missing great opportunities. Thank you.
And Fred, I'm surprised, I'm surprised you're continuing so long without food.
No, I went in, got a cupcake.
Now, and actually, thank you, and Carl, I'm struggling to find, I was trying to find it for my report, the, the mayors and the water, the Southwest Florida, the Water Conference that's coming up with the area mayors, is that...
22nd.
I was going to say, I know...
22nd in, in Okeechobee.
The 22nd in Okeechobee.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, anyway, so much for that public service announcement, I'm not sure of the details, but anyway, I do want to...
12:30.
What's that?
12:30. It's at 12:30, we don't know where it is.
Yeah, we don't know where it is, okay.
In Okeechobee.
Yeah, no, it's in Fort Myers, though.
Conventions, the visitor center.
Something in Okeechobee going on.
And you know what, I apologize for bringing that up, but it's a good point, we, for anybody that can be there, at least for the Fort Myers, please, please, please do that with the area mayors for water quality.
Is it?
Yeah, sorry, knock it off, I don't know what the date is, or the time, or the location, but please, but please be there, I apologize.
Be there.
Yeah.
I'll find it for you.
But on a serious note, look, we've all looked at the TVs, and probably all have family and friends that live in Orlando, I mean, that is just an absolute travesty, and thoughts and prayers go out. I'm not sure if council received, but I did receive, and I've asked Carl to forward it, if you haven't seen it already, the note from Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer, and I've actually requested that we send a letter of sympathy, support, what have you, up to Mayor, Mayor Dyer and the Orlando community, and just thoughts, thoughts and prayers, we all know how precious life is, and that just was unbelievable, I guess is one word for it. The Benita Springs Charter School, once again, congratulations for what, what they do and continue to do. They're an A-school, and when you look at what it takes to really be an A-school, that, that is quite an accomplishment, so for Principal Carissa Carroll and her team, thank you very, very much. And I just do want to say thank you to Councilman Slakta, and Councilman Forbes, and everybody last night for the Flag Day ceremony, I had never been to one, and it was quite, quite, quite moving, and the history and the honor of the entire ceremony, thank you for asking me to be a part of that. And would echo what Councilman Forbes said regarding looking at and reflecting on the Fourth of July as we come up on the, on the holidays. Take time, explain it to your children, please explain it to your grandchildren, what, what it is, not some watered-down version of what it is, and with that, thank you, everyone, that's my report, and public comment, do we have, actually, before we do that, I apologize, do we need to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved in a second?
There's one, I noticed the errant comma on the second page, in the dollar amount up top, it looks like it says 5.7 million, but it should be 578,000.
Gibby, good for you. Wow, got that?
Glad you collected all of it.
Otherwise, second.
Finders fee.
Finders fee, there you go.
I want 10%.
Anything else?
A second.
Motion and a second, discussion, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, great, public comment.
Okay, great meeting. I'd like to thank Larry Keiker and the Department of Transportation for the work they've done on Hickory Boulevard the last month or so. Phone calls to Larry Keiker's office and meeting him and talking to him in person, I believe got the Lee County come down to cut the grass, they actually cut it twice in a month, that's